Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the Monday, March 27th School Board meeting. We have a lot of people here tonight, so it's an exciting night. First of all, I would ask us all to please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. If you'd now rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now I will have Director India Johnson read our mission statement.
The Waterloo Schools community, excuse me, commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that every, to each and every student will graduate, prepare for college, career, and citizenship as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you very much, India. Now, we do have a little housekeeping here. We will be removing item Q, and that is the elementary science curriculum adoption, page 76 on our agendas board. We are going to be holding a work session to just go over a few questions regarding that elementary curriculum adoption. So, that should be coming to us sometime in April. So, just wanting to pull that item. And then our first item here tonight is Exhibit A, and that is a new partnership recognition. And these are exciting. It's Becker Elementary and Sidecar Coffee. So, I would like to pull up Kelly Martin. And do we have Brandy or Abby here? Awesome. If you want to come on up, we would appreciate that. And you can give us a little information, Mr. Martin, if you would. And we are going to be excited to welcome them.
There we go. Works for me. Good evening. Basically, we have Becker, who's leading the charge with all their partners in education, and Sidecar, who's a new partner. And I'll give them an opportunity to speak.
I'm Emma from Sidecar. We just wanted to say thanks for having us, and we're excited to be partners in Edwith Becker. We look forward to all that we can help do.
Awesome. Thank you.
I think you just made every student's day in the whole district, so thank you.
And we all love coffee, so no partnership with coffee can be wrong. And are we getting a picture? Oakley, picture? Awesome. And Becker's current partners, I'll give you that, are Monster Cookies &amp; More. Well, they got good ones. The Surgery Center, Three Pines Farm, and Vine Valley Real Estate. So, they have some awesome partners already. So, this will add to their wonderful partnerships.
Thank you. We're gonna have them stand in the center so that the garbage can isn't in.
Sure. Sounds like a great idea. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next item tonight is Exhibit B, and this is another partnership, at-large partnership with the Volunteer Center of Cedar Valley. And again, we have Kelly Martin here, and he will give us a little background. And we also have some members of the, Jean, who is a staple around this community. And if you guys would, you know, like to come up too, we'll let Kelly introduce. And thank you so much for being here and all of your volunteer work.
Once again, I'm back. And so, this one happened, we actually had a meeting the other day, and I asked a question. I said, "Are you guys partners with us?" And they were like, "No, but we do a lot in the schools." I was like, "Well, let's just become partners at large." So, that's where we are. At-large basically gives all our children and schools opportunities to flourish. So, I'll let these ladies speak on their behalf.
Thank you. Hello. Lauren Fink, the Director of the Volunteer Center of Cedar Valley. We have had a longstanding partnership and relationship with the Waterloo Schools for a very long time, way back probably in the late 90s, early 2000s, with our youth service learning program, which is Jean's program. And a little bit more recently with our reading buddies program as part of our AmeriCorps Seniors RSVP, where we're engaging those age 55 and older in service. So, a longstanding partnership and one that we continue, hope to continue for a long time. Thank you, Kelly.
Jean, would you like to just tell us all you have done?
Oh.
Oh, my gosh. You'd be here all night, so maybe not all you've done.
Well, I'll just say that I have the pleasure of going out to the schools and working with young kids. And I want to assure everyone that the future is bright because children, as young as preschoolers, want to do something to make the world a better place. So, have faith. The kids are making the world a better place.
Right. Thank you so much for all your work and for the Volunteer Center.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is Exhibit C, and this is a donation from Kuna Mutual. And a little bit about the background of this. Any donation over $2,500 has to be approved by the board. And it, I believe, yeah. Perfect timing. If you want to come right on up, we're talking about it. Yeah, we waited.
I'm so sorry.
Oh, no worries.
I apologize.
Yes.
I was from home, so y'all have to excuse my tired.
Oh, yeah. And I'm gonna get the recommendation on the table, and then we're gonna turn it over to you, okay?
Okay.
So, the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education accept and acknowledge with gratitude the $15,000 donation from Kuna Mutual to benefit George Washington Carver Academy and East High School as presented.
So moved.
Second.
And discussion. So, if you would just tell us all about this wonderful $15,000.
All right. Thank you so much. I'm sorry, I'm all out of breath. I think we talked about this before when I came before the school board, that the Kuna Mutual Group Foundation looks to center equity. And we look at programs and opportunities for us to be able to do that. And two of those programs that we continuously identified lies within the East High Athletics Program. And I wanted to make sure that that's noted on record, that this, that the $7,500, that is to go to East High, is specifically designated for the athletics program. And it's unrestricted dollars, so that the athletic director, Tim Moses, would be able to use that as he sees fits for those programs. And then the second one is for the program that Josh Payton has allowed a couple of his teachers to start. I don't know the exact name of it, but it's an after-schools program targeting middle school. Tara Taylor runs it. And we kind of look at those opportunities because when we think about equity and underserved communities, we think about, you know, who's not being invested in. And those investments have an unintentional consequence, which is our children. So, that is why Kuna Mutual is making that commitment. And we'll continuously make that commitment because we know that the Waterloo School District has an equity plan. By the way, normally, I would be here when you presented on the equity plan, and I haven't been here. So, if you already did it, I apologize, but I would like to know the date of when you will be presenting on the equity plan to the community. And if so, could I also obtain a copy of that?
Anthony would know.
Yeah. And our HR director is off ill tonight, but we have not had it yet. And we actually have a committee. I don't, are you part of the committee or?
No. And you now, you are now. I'll make sure you're on it.
I am. Yeah. I just haven't been able to attend the meetings.
It's hard.
Yeah. It is. But I do regularly stay in touch with individuals, and they let me kind of know a little bit about what's going on. But I know that there's normally a formal plan that's been introduced or will be introduced. And I did want to make sure that we did receive a copy of that as well.
Sure. We will make sure Pam's making a note of that now. And our finance director, Mr. Coughlin, is making a note of the $7,500 for the East High Athletics, so.
Okay. One question to you, Mr. Coughlin. How would you like the checks distributed? Because I actually will cut those tonight.
You can just bring them to the office here, and we'll notify and handle the money.
Okay. And so, one check or two checks?
One check is fine.
One check payable to the Waterloo School District?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, then I guess we have it.
Yes. All in favor?
Well.
And if you would just tell us a little bit, your name and your occupation. We kind of rushed you in there. I apologize for that.
No, that's okay. My name is Sharina Salas. I am the Community Relations Manager, and I represent our Kuna Mutual Foundation Group. We have a foundation arm. We're headquartered in Madison, Wisconsin, but we have an office location in Waverly, Iowa, that houses about 562 of our employees. 27% of our work population we pull from Waterloo Cedar Falls.
Awesome.
Ms. Salas, I just want to thank you for coming back again and bringing us these funds, especially identifying programs, like being focused in what you see that is going to make a difference. Thank you so much. And it, you know, you know the good it does, so.
Thank you so much. I'm a product of East High and the Waterloo School District, so you could say, well, when you're invested in a child, this is what happens. They grow up, they get to make decisions, and they can influence where dollars go.
And they can make a difference in the world, and we appreciate that. Because in the world of some of these students, you're making a huge difference, so thank you for that, so.
You're welcome.
All in favor then of accepting the $15,000? Please state aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries 4-1 with the chair vote, 5-1 with one abstention. Yes. Director Lael Schmidt is gone tonight, so we're down to six, not seven. So, all right, you've been approved. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I'll quietly leave.
Our next item on the agenda is Exhibit D, and this is donation to the West High Girls' Golf Team. And the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education accept and acknowledge with gratitude the $5,000 donation from George Cooley to benefit the West High Girls' Golf Team as presented.
So moved.
Second.
And we have Kelly Nelson, the coach. And I think we have Mr. Huff here. And so, if you want to just give us a little background and just a little bit about your team this year.
All right. Very excited to accept the donation. Is it on? Yeah. Very excited to accept the donation from George Cooley. He's been a longstanding West High supporter. And this season, this is my 12th year coaching, we have 24 girls, the highest amount that we've had. Also, bringing in, we're able to have some junior high, middle school girls practice with us as well. And I have four that are interested in that, so the growing program, getting better every year. We are looking at using these funds for big items like golf bags, new rain gear, and also some shag bags to have more for practice and things like that. But, oh, and push carts. Push carts for 18 hole meets, very important for these girls. They don't realize how hard it is to carry your clubs for that long. So, it's just a great opportunity for us, and I really appreciate the support from the Waterloo Schools and George Cooley from CNS Car.
Awesome. And what is the breakdown of the 24? Is it mainly upper class or a lot of lower class?
It's actually almost even throughout.
Awesome.
Four seniors right now, and then kind of trickles down. Yeah, so it's great.
And do every, do they ever match play the coach?
Haven't been beaten yet.
Awesome.
That's a challenge they're gonna remember now.
Yeah.
Kelly, I just wanted to acknowledge, like, where you brought the program from when Josie was a freshman. How many girls were there?
Seven.
Seven.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so, that's just been in four years, oh, I'm sorry, six years. So, it's pretty amazing.
Yep. Thank you.
Good job of recruiting.
Thanks.
Awesome.
Have a big pool at Hoover.
Okay. So, all in favor of accepting the $5,000 donation? Please state aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries 6-0. Thank you very much. The next thing on our agenda tonight is, this is so exciting, the board celebration of Waterloo School Athletics. And we have Dan Huff here, Tim Moses here, and is Tom here?
He's at a soccer jamboree.
He's at a soccer game.
We've got a packed house out there. I'm gonna, we're gonna have him come into the back, and when we talk about their teams and those coaches and teams will come forward. We got a unique problem. We've had so much success this past winter, so it's gonna be a large group coming in here.
Well, we're excited about that. We wanted success, and we wanted, and we may ask each athlete to say one thing. What should we ask him?
We're prepared.
We're prepared. Okay. Best memory. How about, okay. Don't be intimidated. We are so excited you guys are here. Come on up. Wow, Tim, that's a pretty nice trophy there.
Yeah.
Come on in, students, athletes. Oakley, could you come up here and get a picture from our view? Okay. Of everything. You guys, this is impressive. This is way impressive. It is. See, I told you this. It's okay. They keep coming. Keep coming. Keep coming. You're all welcome. You athletes and parents, yeah, we just need to give you guys a round of applause right now. This is like a Waterloo Proud moment. This is way cool. But we will turn it over to Mr. Huff right now, and we just want each of you kids, if you, when you come up, we keep it quick, but just your quick name, your grade, and your best memory. Quick, okay?
All righty. Hey, thanks, first off, thanks to you guys up there, not only for what you do all year long and to keep our schools going and support all of these endeavors, whether it's academic or athletic. We greatly appreciate it. We also greatly appreciate the opportunity to come and share some of the successes, some of the many successes. I had a chance, I just kind of thought about it. I looked back through a lot of yearbooks we have up in our office, all the way back when I and Kerry Burt were around West High. This year here exceeds any of the stuff in the, in many, many yearbooks. This was a really championship year. We've got a lot of great coaches and a lot of athletes that put a lot of time to make this happen. So, we're gonna, I'm gonna turn it over. We're gonna start with East High here, and Coach Moses is gonna talk about all the great success East High has had this past year, past winter. And then Mr. Alsis, they have a soccer jamboree tonight over at Memorial. It's to kick off our first home event here for the, for the spring season. So, he was not able to make it. So, then we'll talk about West. And any questions you have? And athlete, be ready. Name, grade, quick memory. All right. Mr. Moses, take it away.
Awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. And also, thank you to the school board members and Superintendent Jerr Smith for allowing us to bring our athletes in. I appreciate the email that you had sent out about a month ago about this event. I think it's a great opportunity to showcase our kids and the talent that we have here in this, in this community. I also would like to, before I say anything else, I'd like to say thank you to Sharina Salas and the Kuna Financial Group for their donation to East High Athletics. And we will definitely make good use of that money and, and for our kids. With that being said, again, this has been a great winter sports season for East High School. And as, as with any athletic director, you know, you want to win. You know, you want to win, you want to win and do things the right way. And, and our coaches have done that. Our coaches have put in that extra time and, in the off-season and prepared our kids to the best of their abilities to be able to, to approach the season and on-game days and during the season perform at their highest level. So, I'm extremely grateful for the coaching staff that we've been able to put together here in my three years at East High School, starting with volleyball. And I don't think I was able to bring this in, well, this is the first time I'm bringing it in. So, this is the Iowa Lions Trophy that each school gets, and as you win your conference championship, you get a chance to put something on the trophy. So, I would like to acknowledge our girls volleyball team, although they're not here, that's a fall sport, obviously, but although they're not here, I want to congratulate our girls for winning the first conference championship in, in the Iowa Lions Conference. I mean, that's, you know, it's been a while since East High's won a conference championship in any sport. So, to be in this new conference, that's what the purpose and the goal was, was to start having some success, and with that success, you get some accolades along the way. We have three girls that are committing this Friday to further their volleyball careers at Warburg College. We got Carson Miller. Tion Wise is gonna be committing to Iowa Central. And we have Natalie C. that's gonna be committing to Ellsworth Community College this Friday. So, that's also another celebration. Thank you. And so, moving forward to the winter sports season, starting off with boys basketball. Boys basketball claimed to share the IAC North Division title with an overall record of 13-9 and winning the first round of the boys sub-state game before facing off with Valley of West Des Moines, the eventual, the eventual state champion. The Trojan Boys also secured a victory over Cedar Falls for the first time in many years. And when I say many years, that's 17 games. And so, I don't know, we play them twice in the season, so 17 games, do the math. That's, that's a long time that we have not been able to beat those Tigers, but this year we declawed them. So, again, so we'll have a label going on this trophy here for the boys basketball team, and I'll turn things over to Coach Carmichael.
Thank you. No, I won't. Thank you. I'm just glad that you guys have invited us here to show your appreciation, and we're here to show our appreciation to you. I'm gonna let the players go so that we can get this done.
My name is Jamarius. I'm in 12th grade, and my favorite memory of basketball season will be beating Cedar Falls.
My name is Kiwan. I'm a senior. My favorite memory was being the conference champs.
My name is Dewan Rambis. I'm a senior, and my favorite memory was the locker room after being Marshalltown to become conference champs.
My name is Dejounte. I'm a junior. My favorite memory was beating CF.
My name is Manny. My favorite memory was beating CF. I'm a senior.
My name is Atarion Spates. I'm a senior. My favorite memory was beating Ames.
And one thing that I did forget, that I really think that needs to be highlighted, is that we did have some all-academic guys as well. And so, we had Juanne Rambis, Emmanuel Williams, Eric Yu, and then two freshmen that made all Iowa Lions Conference too. So, we need to make sure that we acknowledge them as well.
Okay. Go ahead. Hold on, Oakley. We have Mike Taylor. Mike is, he's, he's so quiet. He's just. The next, the next celebration that we have is, is our boys and girls bowling team. This is, I mean, this has been, this is, this is remarkable to have Cadence Hyde. Cadence Hyde, she's a senior this year. She's a individual state bowling champion. She's actually our fourth in a row individual state bowling champion. So, with that being said, we also have, let's see, the team probably claimed the four-straight individual champion in a row. Congratulations to our head bowling coach, Mike Weber. Mike Weber was honored as the IGH SAU Golden Plaque Award recipient. Mike's unfortunately not here today. I think he's on vacation. Off of work. Well, we'll call it off of work. Yeah, off of work. Alex Huntley. Alex Huntley qualified for the. Alex Hunley. Alex Hunley qualified for the state tournament and made it to the final eight on the strength of a 300 game. I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let, yeah, yeah. I'll let, I'll let, and this is Travis Hoing. He's our assistant coach. And I'll let Travis explain that 300 game, 'cause that was remarkable.
So Alex is actually not an East High student. He's a Dunkerton student who bowls for East High. Happens to be my stepson as well. He shot that 300 first game of our individual championship, making him the youngest bowler in the Cedar Valley to shoot 300. Cadence, three-year varsity bowler. I'll let her talk about what she did, 'cause it's awesome.
So my name is Cadence Hyde. I am a senior, and my favorite memory was probably seeing all my girls win state and then winning state myself. Honestly, it was just a really fun experience.
My most memorable moment, shooting 300. I mean, yeah, that's easy. Then, I'm a freshman, and...
My name is Alex Hunley. I'm done now.
Alex, Alex actually came back in the state bowling meet and bowled a 279. He just missed a, a perfect game in the state bowling meet. I don't know if it was a 10th frame or something like that.
Is Cadence, is she, yeah, are you bowling college cadence?
I'm going to you and I, who they have a club team, so I'll bowl for a club team.
She's put her future over bowling, but will continue bowling.
And, and so with that being said, I just wanna acknowledge my, my learning of these, all these different sports as the athletic director. I was impressed that I just said the 10th frame, and I was right. I didn't know what frame it was really was. But I'm learning. I'm learning the game of bowling, and that's the unique thing about being an athletic director. You, you get the chance to learn all these sports and learn the terminology and all this other great things that, so, yeah. Up next, we have our girls' basketball team. Girls' basketball team had the most wins in many, in many seasons, 15, finishing the season with a 9-13 record. And the majority of those 13 losses, all were probably single-digit losses. I mean, these girls that we had this year and that we got coming, we don't lose a girl. They battled hard every game, and they were, they had a chance to win a lot of those close games, where there were two or one-point games. And I'll come up here, I'll, I'll let Coach Corey Mohammed, come on up.
I'm Coach Corey Mohammed. How y'all doing today, tonight? We did play West High twice, so it wasn't close. But those are two games, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna be, keep it real. I see you over there, Doc. We coming. I ain't hard to find. But as T-Mo said, we did have a pretty good season. Best record we've had in almost 15 years. I think since 2007, when they were led by Elser Greer and Michaela Sims, we're Montgomery now, where they were a top-five team, making it to the sub-state final. So I have a few girls here. I have quite a few girls that are playing AAU ball as well, and playing some soccer. So I'll let them go, go ahead and say something.
My name is Joseline Zarco, and I'm a freshman. My favorite memory was away games.
Maya Norman, junior, and my favorite memory was the bus rides to away games, 'cause we didn't have our phones.
My name's Grayson. I'm in 9th grade, and my favorite memory was away games.
I'm Nyla Norman. I was the only senior on the team this year, and I couldn't pick a favorite memory, 'cause it's always a good time when you play with Coach Corey.
I take that. I take that. Oh, man, I don't even know what to say right now. I appreciate that. But it was fun. We did have seven girls that were all-academic in our conference. Phenomenal. We had two or three girls that were 4.0 students and one that was above a 4.0. Jayla Stanford was unanimous first-team all-conference. First time that I've coached a girl in my 10 years that's been unanimous first-team. And we had four total, five total girls that made the all-conference team as well. It was the first time in school history, and the most ever for East High. I did find that out. 2007 only had four girls, and so we had some great accomplishments, great strides, had a lot of fun. Surprised they was like the bus trips, 'cause I did take phones on the way. I was pretty strict on that. But looking forward to the growth of the program and just to keep continuing moving forward. Thank you. I'm gonna take her out to eat for that compliment.
The next celebration that we have, it's a historical celebration, because this was the first year that the Iowa Girls High School Athletic Association and the IHSAA sanctioned girls wrestling. So we have Libby Stocks, or Stokes, excuse me, Libby Stokes, Stocks. That's what I thought. Libby, Libby was a qualifier for the state wrestling meet at 115 for the first-ever sanctioned girls' state wrestling tournament, and the Trojans scored 14 points at state. And again, this was a very, like I said, historical year. It was great to watch these ladies wrestle and to see the process and the work that they put in. There's, I mean, she's only a freshman. So she's got, she's got a strong possibility, if not next year, within the next couple, three years, to be a state champion. So Coach Watson, come on up.
Tilt this down a little bit, vertically challenged. How y'all doing? I'm Coach Watson. Like you said, this was our first year getting through this, and it was a journey. I learned a lot. I got my whole little fashion thing now. Carry a little backpack, so I can carry some extra stuff. But like you said, this is our first year. We had like four seniors that got down on the mat. We're returning three freshmen. Well, two. I think Wes will be getting one of my girls, so take care of her. But it was very exciting. Like, we had one qualifier, like you said, Libby. She made it at 115. One of our other athletes got a little hurt. We got a couple injuries that we're getting through, so we're gonna take more next year. But I have a couple girls up here. Let them introduce themselves.
My name is Danaja. I'm in 9th grade. And my favorite memory is watching my teammates wrestle.
Okay, my name is Libby Stocks, and I'm a 9th grader, and my favorite memory was making it to state.
I got a quick question. Is this the first time either of you wrestled? No? You've wrestled before? Okay.
They're seasoned veterans.
This is my assistant, Papa Stocks. This is TJ. Next celebration we have is our boys' wrestling team. This year's, this year's team had three state qualifiers and finished with 12 points, placing them 40th place out of 64 teams. Isaac Lomas, 132. Demarius Henderson, 170, and Kieron Harris-Weasley at 285. The Trojans placed fifth out of nine teams that competed in the IAC Invitational. One team missing due to weather. So they had a very good IAC Conference Tournament, and all these guys are, again, they're juniors for the most part. Couple freshmen and sophomores, but yeah, I'll let Coach Timps, our, our coach, head coach, come up and say a few words.
First and foremost, thank you to the board, Superintendent Dr. Smith for having us. We really appreciate it. This was a great season, just another building block and stepping stone in the right direction for Waterloo East Wrestling. We're really proud of the work that we have done, and we're really proud and sexually blessed to have all these individuals who make up the team. Certainly, this is not everybody, but it truly takes every single person on the squad to have the success that we've been having, and we are looking forward to future success. Like I said, it was a great season. We had two conference champions in Braden Peters. He was a senior, had a spectacular season. Isaac Lomas, our 132-pounder, also won a conference title. Marion Norton, going into his junior year. He was a sophomore this year, got runner-up, placed fifth as a team, went to districts. Had some guys who had to battle back through adversity, being two of them who went to state, Kieron Harris-Weasley and Demaris Henderson, were both injured for a majority of the season. Really bought into the values that wrestling teaches. Young people, perseverance, going through challenges. And these guys punched their ticket to the state tournament, along with Isaac Lomas. And Isaac lost in the blood round, so he lost in the, the round that was, if he would've won, he would've placed. So all these guys are coming back as far as state qualifiers go, so we're really excited about them. The element, or excuse me, middle-school kids that we have coming into high school, it's, it's gonna be exciting. We did have an athlete who decided that maybe Catholic school wasn't the best fit for him, and he's decided to come to public schooling, and he potentially will be going for a fourth state title, which I'm gonna speak it into existence. That happens, that would be Waterloo's, Waterloo in general's first-four-time state champion. And so while the pressure is there, we're ready for the challenge. We're excited about what the future holds for East High Wrestling. I'm gonna let these guys come up and talk and introduce themselves.
My name is King. I'm a freshman, and my favorite memory was wrestling at the Battle of Waterloo.
My name is Gianni Speller. I'm a sophomore. Favorite memory was bus ride home from Kennedy.
My name is Connor Witton. I'm a freshman, and my favorite memory is probably spending my time with my team.
My name is Isaac Lomas. I'm a sophomore, and my favorite memory is punching my ticket to state.
My name is Kieron Harris-Weasley. My favorite memory, I'm a sophomore, and my favorite memory is the State Hotel.
My name is Demaris Henderson. I'm a junior, and my favorite memory is probably calling out Coach Timps in practice and taking him down.
You didn't tell me about that.
I wanna go on some of these bus and hotel trips now.
The dance team is the next celebration. I don't know if they're here tonight, or I don't see them here, but the dance team competed at the state dance competition. They won the, they got back in December and earned a Division One rating in the POM and hip-hop, hip-hop routines. And so they, I mean, these guys have practiced really hard. And I heard it today said this way, although we try to, you know, bring home these championship trophies, but more importantly, what these coaches do is they build championship relationships. And that's what it's all about at the end of the day. And I think that was a very, very important, that's very important to know in terms of what our coaches do. It's really, truly, the iron sharpen, iron sharpens iron. And they, 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 the coaches push me and, you know, 'cause I'm not, you know, an expert in all the sports, so I'm still learning. But again, thank you guys for having me. I'd like to thank our athletic director, Dan Huff. I mean, Dan, Dan has been a, has been good for me. He's really helped me grow and become the person that I've become. And I also like to say congratulations to these Wahoarks for all their accomplishments this winter, because they've done some amazing and outstanding things, and they continue to set the bar that we try to chase after. So congratulations to you guys, West High Wahoarks. We're all one family, and we're Waterloo Proud at the end of the day. So thank you.
I can't wait to see that trophy keep coming back, Mr. Moses. Thank you very much. That was awesome. And now, West High.
Thank you, Mr. Moses. That was really a great job with that, and wanna really reiterate how great it is to have all these folks come out, players, coaches, athletes, and once again, for you guys providing this opportunity. We're gonna, I'm gonna change it up a little bit. I'm gonna read some highlights, and it'll go each individual sport. Wahoarks, congratulations to our girls' basketball coaches and team members on winning the fourth-straight MVC Division Title. Never been done before, and on reach for, for West High, I believe, if Dr. Pappas could correct me if I'm wrong. Their fourth-straight trip to the girls' basketball state tournament. The girls finished a season record 22-2, and Dr. Pappas and his staff are named the MVC Valley Division Coaching Staff of the Year. Our boys' basketball team, the Wahoak Boys Basketball Team, congratulations. Reaching the boys' sub-state finals and finishing 17-6 on the season at multiple, we'll get to them in the individual all-conference. Congratulations to our girls' bowling team on competing at the state bowling tournament, reaching bracket play with the number-one seed. The girls were defeated in the quarterfinals. They were ranked number-one all season, had the highest scores going in, and just got flipped in the, in the, in the match play in the quarterfinals. Congratulations to our boys' bowling team at West High, coached on winning the state team championship. The boys received a number-one going into bracket play, and they won three more matches to become state champs. Big, big accomplishment there. Congratulations to our five bowlers that competed at state individual bowling. Sydney Wilson, Ainsley McConaughey, Samantha Camillo, Tavon Homalar, and Braden Steer all competed at the state individual championships. Sydney Wilson finished third overall, and Tavon Homalar, Homalar, sorry, finished, I think, fifth overall, if they did that, if I said that right. Also, congratulations to Coach Brandon Steen for being named the girls' high school coach of the year, the boys' high school coach of the year, sorry, and the MVC girls' coach of the year. Is that correct, Mr. Steen? Thank you. Congratulations to our Wahoak wrestling team. They qualified two individuals for the state wrestling meet. Cooper Paxton and Arnel Cutt, both seniors. We've got a lot of guys that are out for different sports, multi-sports. They, they weren't able to make it tonight. The Wahoaks scored 16 points and placed 45th out of the 64 teams. Congratulations to our Wahoak girls' wrestling team. They formed together, got girls out, had a really strong season, qualified two for the state tournament, first-ever state tournament. There's a lot of teams that didn't have anybody there, and our first two girls' teams both were well-represented at the state meet. Congratulations. Our Wahoak dance team, on the performance of their state, on the several, our four solos, our hip-hop routine, and our pop routine, all are Division One ratings. They also were selected, received the Judges' Correct Choice Award, was given to three out of 500 teams only. Solos were Gabriel Frazier, Sarah Mace, Allison Calon, Grace, Gracie Gates. In addition, the West Dance team was invited to compete at the DTU National Competition in Orlando, Florida, in February. Alright, boys' basketball. I know Coach Fairness wasn't able to make it, but for the boys' basketball, they, as I said earlier, made it to the finals, got beat by the eventual state champion in the sub-state finals in Valley of West Des Moines. They had a second-team All-State player, Keishon Pendleton, a first-team MVC Valley Division, and Samarian Anderson, and first-team MVC Valley, Keishon Pendleton, and honorable-mentioned MVC Valley Division, the King Los, Lees, DeBoo, and Jalil Mandigo. 'Cause I don't believe they were able to make it tonight. Our next group, I'll bring up Dr. Pappas. They had first-team All-State, Hallie Pope, Sarah Hara Williams, McDonald's All-American, and Sahara Williams. She's actually playing tonight in, down in Houston. Big game tomorrow. It'll be on ESPN in the McDonald's Hoops Tournament, I guess it is. And then the MVC Division Athlete of the Year, Sahara Williams. West High All-Time Career Leading Score in Girls' Basketball with 2,039 career points, finishing ahead of a lot of legendary basketball players, girls' basketball players who came through Waterloo. Senior Hallie Pope. And then we have the MVC Divisional Coach of the Year and staff, Dr. Pappas and staff, first-team All-Conference MVC Valley Division. Hallie Pope, and Sahara Williams, who both, you know, selection, second-team All-Conference Valley Division, C.C. Moore, senior. Valley Division, C.C. Moore Senior, and honorable mention, two seniors, Izzy Leaderman and Nia McGee. So, Mr. Dr. Baptist, you wanna come up, give a recap?
Thank you, Mr. Huff, and thanks to the school board for all your great support here. Uh, we had another great, great season, as everybody knows. Uh, just going through, we were 22-2, uh, and I, we were 20-1 in the regular season, which is the best regular season record ever in history of the school. We, uh, were ranked first to start out, and we lost a double overtime game, but, uh, we won four conference championships, MVC Conference Championships, which is unprecedented. And if you...
He can't hear you, yeah.
Can you hear me now?
I don't understand what you're saying.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry about that. All right, there we go. Um, we won four conference MVC Championships, which is unprecedented. Uh, if you really know how hard it is to win one in any sport, uh, you really have to have a great appreciation for four. We won our fourth consecutive Metro Championship, won 14 games in a row, and, uh, we were ranked 18th in ESPN, we were ranked nationally in ESPN, ranked 18th for the entire season, which is a phenomenal accomplishment as well. And we qualified for the state tournament for the fourth consecutive year, which is the first time ever, which is tremendous. But also have to pay a great tribute to our seniors. We had seven seniors this year. Apologize, several of them couldn't make it here tonight. But, uh, they were ranked in the top 10 in 5A for all four years, almost every week for four straight years. They won the four consecutive Metro Championships with a 19-1 record over a four-year period of time. As we said, four MVC Championships, which is unprecedented. And, uh, they won more games in their four-year period than any four-year group or senior group that have ever gone through West High School dating back to 1972-73. And they, uh, actually, uh, ended up winning, uh, about 84 games in four years, which is an average of 21 games a year. You only have a 21-game regular season, so that tells you the type of success that we had there. And, uh, I know that none of us were happy about the way it ended there, but it was a tremendous accomplishment by a tremendous group of, uh, individuals. We had another half dozen that were all academic MVC as well. And tonight, we've got Olivia here. She can come up and share some of her memories. She was one of our dozen players on the varsity there.
Hi, my name is Olivia Torres. I'm a freshman and my favorite memory would probably be when we won regionals, a home game, and the crowd went crazy. That was really fun.
So, thank you all again. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, Olivia.
Thank you.
Moving on to our boys' and girls' bowling team. Once again, we have Coach Brandon Steen. First-team All-State recognition for the boys' side, Tavon Homalar. Uh, Tavon was also the MVC Valley Division Athlete of the Year, first-team All-Conference MVC Valley Division, uh, goes to Tavon Homalar. Second-team All-Conference Valley Division, Ben Greer and Brady Steer, honorable mention. Jacob Melcher, Brady Resetter, Reaster, sorry. And once again, Bowling Coach of the Year, Brandon Steen. I'm gonna also go right into the girls'. MVC Division Coach of the Year, Coach Brandon Steen. First-team All-State, Sydney Wilson and Ainsley McConahay. I don't know if I'm saying that right. Second-team All-State, Samantha Camillo. First-team All-Conference MVC Valley Division, Sydney Wilson, Ainsley McConahay, Samantha Cam- Camillo. Second-team All-Conference, Lydia LJ Orr, and honorable mention, Macy Smedley, Olivia, and Olivia Thol. Coach Steen, come on up.
Thank you all. Excuse me, I got a little frog here.
We have to say, congratulations to you. That is pretty awesome to win that. Good work.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Good work.
Uh, Dr. Smith, thank you, the entire board. Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Huff, what we try to do each and every year takes work and without your guys' support, it doesn't happen. So, appreciate it beyond words. So, thank you very much. Um, Dr., uh, Mr. Huff covered most of the accolades from the season. My favorite memory, if, if none of you've had a chance to go witness a, uh, state bowling finals, it's not just like a normal bowling alley experience. It's big crowds, lots of noise. We have awesome, such an awesome fan base, um, a family behind us, and so appreciate all your support. Uh, couldn't do it with any, without any of them. So, that's my favorite part. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and let the kids come up and tell you their favorite memory. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Ben Greer and, uh, my, I'm a 10th grader and my favorite memory was winning state.
I'm Jake Melcher and my favorite memory is probably the bus rides home.
Um, I'm Drew Britson. I'm in 11th grade and my favorite memory is winning state.
My name's Tavon Homalar. I'm an 11th grader and my favorite memory is getting Bowler of the Year.
My name's Ainsley McConahay. I'm a 10th grader and my favorite memory was winning Metro.
I'm Macy. I'm a freshman and my favorite memory was sub-state.
Um, I'm Sammy Camillo. I'm a senior. My favorite memory was beating Kennedy.
I'm Lydia Orr. Uh, I'm a senior. My favorite memory would be placing fourth all-metro with my mom coaching me.
Um, I'm Sid Wilson. Uh, I'm a senior and my favorite memory would probably be beating Ainsley every time at individual state.
The girls' this year, uh, on our varsity team, we had three seniors. I, my first year coaching was four years ago, so it was a real pleasure and joy to be able to see all four, all three of them come up and from the time they were freshmen all the way up through, um, seniors. So, that was really special. The boys' side, uh, the state champions, we only graduated one senior and we are going to be good for a while. So, thank you.
I love your shirts. I love them. And I have to say, I was talking to a friend from Des Moines and they said that the bowling tradition in Waterloo is just around the state because you win all the time. So, good job raising bowlers and the junior bowling program and the bowling bus as it was at one time. So, thank you so much.
Appreciate it, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
If you're wondering why the bus trips were so well, probably they were all really, really nice Hawkeye charter buses. So, we traveled in style this year. Thanks, Mr. Coughlin, for all your assistance with that. Moving on to wrestling, uh, some really good stuff going on here. We'll start out with boys' wrestling with Coach Brad Mays. We had two state qualifiers, Cooper Paxton and Anell Cutic, uh, won some matches down there, uh, scored some points. There's a lot of teams, number one, that don't get people to the state tournament and there's a lot of teams that don't, once they get there, they don't score any points. So, both, uh, they scored points there. Uh, we had first-team All-Conference, uh, with Cooper Paxton and honorable mention, Anell Cutic. So, Coach Mays, uh, once again, he's had some athletes that are involved in different things and weren't able to make it, but we were very happy to have Coach Mays here to talk a little bit about the season.
First off, um, thanks for, thanks for having us and recognizing us. We appreciate it. Um, so a couple of things on Anell. He had, he won over 25 matches and most of those matches that he won were by fall, which is pretty impressive. And then Cooper Paxton, like, uh, Mr. Huff mentioned, he won the MVC, um, MVC Tournament, which was at home, which was awesome, um, to be able to host it and then to have a conference champ as well. Along with that, Cooper, at the district tournament, he ended up losing his first match and he ended up coming all the way back and getting second. So, that was pretty awesome to see, um, especially considering that, um, he very, very easily could've, um, just, uh, called that a season, but ended up, um, coming back and getting second. And so, that just shows, um, how much, or the type of kid he in, the type of kid he is and, and how much character he has. Um, but yeah, thanks again for your support. We appreciate it.
What are their grades? What grades are they in?
Yeah, so both of them are seniors, so obviously that's unfortunate, but it is what it is. Um, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep, you're welcome.
And then once again, first-ever sanctioned season for the girls' wrestling. Uh, both of our programs got off to a really good start. Uh, we kept them separate. A lot of the schools, uh, Des Moines had all of their girls into one team. In the five public schools, they just made one wrestling team. We've kept ours separate and they're growing the numbers and had some really exciting things. Um, so, Coach Girls Wrestling, state qualifiers, Elizabeth Roberts and Lydia Parkhurst, and then MVC honorable mention Alexis Ott and Elizabeth Roberts. So, I'm gonna bring up Coach Cadlec and Coach Dunning and they can talk about their team and they've got a really good group of young ladies here, uh, that really wanna make a, a move next year in the girls' wrestling world. I'd like to thank everybody here for the support and allowing us to start this individual program for the girls. Um, the five years before that, we tried to have the combined team for boys and girls and we'd only get like two or three girls out. Now that we did it, um, and it's separate, we had eight girls come out and complete the entire season and it's only been like a month and a half since the end of our season, or two months. And right now, it's looking like we're at 15 to 18 girls that wanna come out next year. So, hopefully, they all still come out. But that's kind of like what we're seeing. Um, it's really exciting, really a lot of fun this whole season. Um, and it was great to see these girls grow throughout the whole season and we got even some honors out of it. So, just, that's just on top of it. So, I'll have them come on up and introduce themselves.
My name's Lydia Parkhurst and my favorite memory was probably the match that I found out that I was going to state. Oh, I'm a junior.
My name's Finn Burt. Um, I'm in 9th grade and my favorite memory was probably, um, winning first place with my, in my first tournament.
I'm Lexi Autumn, a junior, and my favorite memory is how proud everyone was when I won my first match.
My name's Lily Miracle. Uh, I'm a junior. My favorite memory was my first practice.
Um, my name's Kami Glider. I'm a sophomore and my favorite memory would have to be our last practice when Lydia got stuck up on the pull-up bars. Um, it took a while to get her down, but she was okay.
Well, congratulations on all of you guys and being trendsetters. This is awesome. You're the first West High Girls Wrestling Team and Jesse wants to talk to you.
Just a quick question here. I, I will say that as a parent of a past girls' wrestler is a great, CVS has come along. I, she had a couple of teammates there and it was great to see this become a single program. I, I would like to ask Coach, our spanning numbers, what, what's the challenges of the first-year program and what we need to do to help this program, both schools, grow going forward?
Um, one of the biggest things, like the biggest hurdle that we have are just preconceived notions. Um, like, everyone has a preconceived notion about what a girl wrestler would look like. Um, and so, the more exposure we get through home meets and home tournaments and all of that, that's what's gonna help change like a lot of those attitudes. And I think having those home meets and then having the exposure that these girls have had in front of the whole student body is what's getting more of those girls that wanna come out next year.
Have we been able to get like the female singlets and everything? Like, do you have everything you need to have female wrestlers now?
We just put in our order for female singlets, um, and then they should be coming sometime this week. So, we should have those ready to go, um, for all of that. So, that's kinda where we are with that, too.
Awesome. Awesome. Well, we're gonna get your picture. This is really an awesome occasion, so. I wanna get down.
I know, we're photo bombing every one of these, huh?
Yeah, okay, we're almost done.
Once again, thank you, folks. Uh, I know you gotta...
And I think we miss boys' swimming.
Boys' swimming. I'm sorry.
Yep.
Thank you. Boys' swimming, Coach Jeff Camp. He's not able to be here. He's taken a, a new job that has him traveling a lot, so he's down, I believe, in Alabama this week. Um, we had a state qualifier in Ian Sabana-Jick, uh, in the 50 Free, and we had an honorable mention MVC Valley Division in the 100 Fly Nate Kind. So, once again, we were represented at the state meet in basically all of the endeavors we went. So, last thing I wanna talk about a little bit, I was at the, um, AD State Convention this past week, Saturday, Sunday, and, and this morning. And it's a great group of people. One of the things they talked about, we, in some breakout session, is how school, schools are dealing with a significant shortage of, of officials for games. And we were very proud to say, you know what? We, we certainly probably have some needs and whatnot, but we've got a really good group in the Waterloo Area Officials Association who recruits, uh, referees, who trains referees, who works with referees, so that we can have the games and the games officiated well and, and not, uh, going looking for those officials. I wanna mention, uh, Aster Williams is, is really instrumental in, in the Waterloo Officials Association as is Kelly Martin, um, and Jake Schaper of the, of the Waterloo Rec, uh, at the Young Arena, and others. It's really great to see that we have that in our community and, and building on that and getting the next generation of officials. So, a big shout-out to that. Uh, I would say someone once said, "If there are no refs, it's just recess." So, thank you, folks, for doing that. And once again, thanks for everybody coming out and thank you guys for allowing us to do that. It's, uh, was a very exciting and fun season and we hope we can just keep it going, so.
Thank you for that shout-out. But I do wanna mention, um, our vice president, Ms. Camarian Turner is in the crowd as well.
Yes.
So, she's a...
Absolutely.
Well, thank you very much and thank you all for coming and recognizing your athletes. We're excited. Lot of exciting things happening and we look for even more next year.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay, now we're going to move on to our, our action items. And well, the first thing is our graduation dates and this is for 2024. So, we like to get the dates out there early for, these are parents with juniors, um, this year. And for next year, the graduation dates for the class of 2024 are West High School, again at the McLeod Center and you, at UNI, Tuesday, May 21st, 2024 at 6:00 PM. East High School will be the next day, Wednesday, May 22nd, 2024, 6:00 PM at McLeod Center. And thirdly, Expo will be at Expo, Thursday, May 23rd, 2024 at 6:00 PM. So, this is information only, but you can start planning for, um, the next, um, graduating class, excitements for 2024. Next thing on our agenda tonight is the...
That's my last baby, Sue.
What?
That's my last baby.
Oh, man. Well, now you know what day it is, so, good. Um, the next part of our agenda is the consent agenda and... Oh, I'm sorry. Um, where, where do I have here? I don't have it. Okay, okay. But we have information from boards, uh, from individuals and is there anyone here tonight that would like to address the board? And if we do, we have a caveat we will read and... And if we do, we have a caveat we will read, and this is the opportunity where those who wish to address the school board may do so. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Mrs. Arndorfer will hold up a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining and a red card when your time is expired. At that time, I will ask you to conclude your public remarks. Please also keep your comments respectful and constructive. We're all here with the goal of trying to help our students. Please avoid criticizing the job performance of specific employees of the school district. Personnel matters are confidential and must be handled through proper channels and not in a public forum. Finally, we do provide this as an opportunity for public comments, but it is generally not a back-and-forth discussion, especially of items not on our agenda. At times, we will try to help if we can with information before or after this meeting, but we have to proceed with our regular board agenda items. With that, I invite anyone who wishes to address the board to please come forward, state your name, your home address, and to make sure the green button is on. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Courtney Galloway. I stay at 616 Fowler Street, Waterloo, Iowa 50703. My daughter attended Carver Middle School up until February 20th. On February 20th, she was involved in a fight, and this would have been her second fight. The fight came from after being bullied after so long, which then included her to be expelled from the school and sent over to the virtual program at Expo. However, we have skipped over, they gave me a 504.3 school conduct thing, and we have skipped over number six through number 12. Chloe was not offered an EDP at all, just straight virtual. She just got enrolled in school on March 21st. When I arrived at Expo, they didn't have the information. It was just sent over March 21st. So she's been out of school for 10 to 15 days, no work, no anything. So I have spoke with Josh, I have spoke with Sheena as well. I wanted to see if I can get some type of hearing to see about her being placed back into school. She just started her work as of today. We tried to get a hot spot. They didn't have that ready. That took another two days to get. I've called many a time since November, because that was when the first fight had occurred. Josh was stating, we'll get down to the bottom of it. We're trying to get down to the bottom of it. This kept going on. I would call up to the school every week, every other day. Chloe would go in and speak to him about what's going on. It's always, we'll get down to the bottom of it. I asked to have a parent meeting with all the parents there and the students. He didn't want to do it because of safety. However, I feel he could have had a liaison there as well. I have to advocate for Chloe. Chloe only can do so much. If she go in and speak to him about what's going on and nothing is being done, she's skipping class because she felt like she didn't want to be there, that's a problem for me. So I was going to write an appeal, however, the appeal that I was going to write was going to end up back on the same people's desk. I have reached to Jared as well. I had not gotten a call back from him, just different things that has taken place up until now. Let's see. Chloe, Chloe take full responsibility for what she has done. We talk about this all the time. I will say that there was a teacher injured, but this was a brawl, so everyone should have been expelled.
Okay. I thank you very much. Your three minutes are up. Yeah, she was, she kept track here. Yeah, that's what she was doing is, yeah, she's the Board Secretary. And we can look into this, and did you want to speak too, sir?
Yes.
Okay, sure. Please state your name and-
My name is Lawrence Marshall. I am the very proud pastor of Payne Memorial African Methodist Episcopal Church. I am the very proud pastor of these two wonderful ladies that are standing behind me, and I'm also a retired educator in Chicago Public Schools of 18 years. It is so important that we, and Madam President, I agree with you wholeheartedly. We don't want to point fingers or point blame, but we'll be, we'll do an injustice if we don't hold those leaders accountable for being leaders. It's unfortunate that our students cannot feel safe and may not feel safe in some of our schools. And so when we come to speak to our leaders to say, hey, I'm being bullied. I need some assistance. I need some help. And my question here tonight to the Board is, what do you do when, as the pastor, when the student comes to you and say, hey, Pastor, I'm afraid to go to school because no one's there in an adult role will hear me. I'm afraid to go to school because I'm being bullied because of my hair or what I wear. And so as their pastor, I thought it was important that I come here tonight and express the sentiments of not only Chloe, but so many other students that have been challenged through these same situations. And so again, Madam President, I agree that we all not to blame, but we ought to hold people accountable, those people that are in leadership position. Chloe wants to speak on her own behalf as it relates to her taking ownership, as Courtney, her mom stated, for what she did in this behavior. But I do feel that we need to make sure that the proper protocol is dutifully carried out, and if it had not been, she should be immediately returned back to her school. Thank you so very much, Board.
You're welcome. Please state your name and your address, please.
My name is Chloe Glover, and my address is 616 Fowler Street, 50703, and I went to Carver. So the day of the first fight, well, it all started back in, what day? July? All in July. I had got jumped by their cousins at the My Waterloo Day Parade, and they tried to apologize, so we all squashed it, and we had got back to school until, up to November 2nd. And I had gotten in a fight with the girls, and we got put out of school. So we come back to school, and February, up to February 20th, we kept going to Mr. Peyton and telling him the posts that they was making about us on social media, and we wasn't like making posts or anything back. So he was like, okay, well, we're going to get down to the bottom of that. And he kept saying it, like, kept on saying it, and he wasn't doing nothing about it. So I'm like, okay, now we got to fend for ourselves, because apparently no teacher is trying to help us here. So February 20th, in the morning time, me and my friend, we had went to the principal's office, and we had shown him that the post that the girl was making about us, and the girl, she was just like making posts every day about us, and we're not talking about them girls or nothing. And we showed him, and he was like, okay, we'll get down to the bottom of it. And here come lunchtime. The girls had asked us, came to our table and asked us, did we want to fight? And we was looking at her like, why would you ask that? You don't have a reason to ask that. And they saying that I harmed the teacher, and that's not true, because they yet to roll back the cameras and prove that I put my hands on the teacher, and I know I did it. So.
And just real quick, I'm sorry. I would like to address her attendance. They had her marked all those days as unknown absence up until the, from February 3rd to February 10th, unknown absence, and that just goes to show that nobody knew what was going on. Josh did reach out to me afterwards. He thought other people was taking care of that responsibility, but it wasn't taken care of.
Right. Okay. Thank you, three, for all coming. We appreciate it. And you are very poised, Chloe. I appreciate hearing what you had to say. And I know that Sheena has looked into this, and there is some documentation, and we will definitely have her reach out to you. I know you said you had spoke to Sheena, but, and I do apologize if at some point there was a situation with, you know, in your eyes, things weren't moving as rapidly and quickly as they should have. And I agree that kids need to have classes and be in school and be held accountable for that. So at this point, though, we will, we can't, you know, do anything about it here. We can, we heard you very loud and clear, and we thank you for that. And if you want to call Pam Arndorfer tomorrow at the superintendent's office, and she can have some more information and do some further checking and visiting with you if that would be appropriate for you.
Okay. Ms. Pam, when is a good time for me to call you? End day? Just so I can put it on my schedule as well.
Yeah, but-
You're looking on the phone tomorrow up here.
Yeah. But we do appreciate you coming, and like I said, we do know that it had been investigated by our Student Services Department. Now, I have not seen the results of that investigation, so we will have to look into that also, so.
Sure. And how long do you think it'll take as far as the process? Because she's, yes-
So actually, we do have some different paperwork. Would it be, would you be able to stop in tomorrow morning?
Um-
Or would a phone call be better?
I can come at my lunchtime. Or can you email them to me, and I can mail them back?
Yes, 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 yes. Give me a call tomorrow morning. Let me give you my phone number.
Okay.
Yep. I'm sorry. And then I will get your email address and that type of thing, and we will discuss some stuff tomorrow morning.
Okay. And this is what I'm dealing with on a daily basis. She a good kid.
Yeah. Thank you for being her advocate.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. Yeah, thank you. If you would please state your name and your address, and we'll start your three minutes.
Good afternoon. Is it evening or afternoon? My name is Camarian Turner Campbell. My address is 2837 East Fourth Street in Waterloo, Iowa 50703. I am, yes, I'm a referee, but I'm not here for that. And this comes on the heels of the introducing the wrestling team, but Case Campbell is my kid, and he is, oh, good. Case is a fourth grader at Highland Elementary, and he's actually outside playing basketball, so that's not a part of the story. Anyways, so Case is a fourth grader at Highland. He started attending Highland in the second grade, and overall, we've had a great experience with Highland. We love his teacher, the principal, the staff, the building people. They all love Case. He all right most of the times. But anyways, so Term Two's report card I received on the heels of having Case's conferences. Term One, he was proficient in some areas, and then Term Two, he was developing in some areas. And I had a ton of questions about, is my kid regressing? Are we spending too many hours wrestling? Case also plays baseball. Case also plays football. And I'm like, what is going on? So I call his teacher. Hey, can you explain? He gives me some answer through dojo that I kind of understand, but I don't understand. So then I call the principal. Can you help me understand how, what a two means, what a three means, what's going on with this? And he's like, honestly, Cam, we changed some stuff this year. I don't quite understand it, but let me redirect you to Ryan. I had a conversation with Ryan, and now I have two more follow-up meetings with Ryan. I'm frustrated because Case is brilliant, and I'm not just saying that because he's my kid, but he's a smart kid. And whatever is going on with these assessments and how they're being scored and what's factoring to them and what's weighted and what's not weighted was not properly communicated to me. Now Ryan is explaining it to me. We received a letter at the end of November that didn't have common language in it, and I'm smart, but I don't understand a lot, you know, some of the language of academia. So it wasn't using common language. Case started school in August. The letter came out at the end of November. In March, I'm having a conversation with the principal, and he still didn't understand how everything was scored and what was going into the assessment. So it left me feeling very frustrated. Now, Case is a rough kid, and he's had some issues on the playground, tackling people too hard. I get a call about that. One time, he told a girl she sucked during PE. I got a call about his sportsmanship in PE. So when there's a behavior-related issue is what it seems I'm being communicated with. As far as what's going on academically, how I can support my kid, I wasn't fully, I don't feel like the school was fully transparent. I feel like there's some gaps in communication. The fact that the principal didn't know how to answer the questions about the assessments in March, and then the teacher is giving me one question, just left me feeling super frustrated. So if we're going to work together as a team, parents need to know what's going on. I think parents need to be at the table when we're having a conversation about how communication is going to be delivered to parents, so that we can say, hey, this is the kind of stuff I want to know about my kids, and this is the kind of common language you can use, so that parents can understand what's going on. I've been making it clear since day one that I want to be super involved in what he has going on, and I'm trying to make sure I'm a part of the team. But I can't do that if I'm not receiving the information that I need in order to support him.
Right, thank you. And your three minutes is up, sorry. But we appreciate you coming, and we can also, you know, check into this situation and see, I understand your frustrations, and it is, it is a team, and we want our teachers and our administrators to know what's going on. So shall she call you also, Pam, or where should we?
Yeah. Again, you can call me in the morning, and then I can get you directed to the correct person in the administration building.
The correct person in the administration building?
Yes, yes.
All right. Let me put your telephone number in my phone. What's that number, Pam? That's your direct number?
That's the direct office number, yes.
That's the direct office number. Do you have an extension, or do I need to ask?
Nope, that'll dial direct to me.
Okay. Awesome. So then the next up after this is me calling you. You directed me to the right person in the administration building.
Correct, correct. We'll get some additional information, and then we'll get you hooked up with the correct person here in the admin office.
All right.
Hopefully, we'll get it rectified, and your son can-
You know, and you understand what's being graded and what's going on.
That's a piece of it, but okay. All right.
Well, and maybe beyond just her, too.
Right. I'm sorry.
Maybe, maybe not just you, maybe other parents, too, that this would be helpful.
That would be, I think so. I'm sure people care. And it's a lot of conversation and a lot of chatter about what's happening, but people don't have time to make it to these meetings or don't know who is the correct person to call, or don't have the courage to come here and have these conversations. But people are having the conversations, and then people are feeling frustrated, and people are wanting to take their kids out of the district. And I'm one of those parents that was feeling like that, too, as well. So it's, it's, we need to be talking.
Right. And thank you for alerting us and giving us the chance to do that. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the Board? Sure, if you would come forward.
I've been here a long time.
Well, welcome to our meetings. But just state your name and address, please, and then your three minutes will begin.
Thank you, Madam President. But before I start, I have two separate issues. So I want to know if I get three minutes for one and three minutes for another. I'm representing one, or I see India saying no.
No, no, I'm not.
No, if you're representing two entities, then we will give you three minutes for each. But when the red card comes up, if you would please respect us by stopping, that would be great.
Sure.
Yeah.
All right. So my name is Miriam Tyson, and I am Chair and Project Manager for Cedar Valley Faces of Excellence. And that is a project where we recognize our high school and college graduates from the Cedar Valley. And each year, we have a baccalaureate service where we recognize them, and then afterward, we have a reception for them. The day before, we also have some workshops that provide life tips for our graduates. The reason why I'm here is to personally come and thank you all for giving us an opportunity to get that information out to the faculty and the staff and the students and the parents. Before, we used to, you all would just post it on your calendar. This year, because of your new portal, the information that we've sent out, everyone receives it. And it makes me feel really good about that, because for years, we were not able to get that information out to the parents. So I just want to thank you on behalf of Cedar Valley Faces of Excellence for allowing us to get this information out. All right, so I'm done with that. Thank you. Okay. The other one, it's more of a personal thing for me, but before I do that, we know that March, it's at the end of the month, but I still want to recognize March as the- but I still want to recognize March as the International Women's Month. I want to thank each and every one of my sisters sitting here tonight for all the work that you do on behalf of this community. You have other things going on in your life, you're taking care of your families, and you're also, I suspect, volunteering for other initiatives in the community. So I just want to thank you for that. I know it's rough. I've served on the Hawkeye Community College Board, and you put in a lot of time. So thank you for what you're doing, and thank you to the gentlemen who are always here having our back. Sometimes we try to be independent, but we know we can't get it done without y'all too. So, thank you. I, I wanted to talk to you just briefly on a couple of things. So I, I was looking at your mission statement and your goals and the quadrants that you have where you focus on people, achievement, environment, and community. And I, you know, I feel really good about this work that you've put in on it. But in recent weeks, we have had a lot of legislation that is targeted on diversity, equity, and inclusion. We also have legislation on school choice. So the school choice legislation, as you know, is, well, you all know what it's focused on, and that parents have more opportunities now to move their children from public schools to private schools. And as much as we want to think about how good we are, we know that we're going to lose some students, and we're going to lose some parents along the way. But I believe that if we work hard enough and smart enough, we'll be able to keep our student population. Having said that, though, I think that we need to recognize that we have some issues. And you're going to be working on budgets later on, and I want to make sure that when you work on those budgets, that you think about what's going to happen if we lose some of our students and some of the parents, and maybe even some of your staff. Because for each student, I think, was it five or six students? You lose, you lose money for your teachers.
Every student, we lose money, yeah.
I don't remember what the stats is on that. But you're going to be losing teachers, and you're probably going to lose the administrators. So I want you, when you make decisions on replacing them, because that is part of your goals here about prioritizing your employee recruitment and retention, that you think about your teachers and your administrators of color. We are the last to be hired and the first to be fired. And so I'm just asking you to really take that into consideration. And when you maintain those teachers and the faculty, I should say, staff and administrators, I want you to remember to mentor them.
Thank you very much.
To give them whatever support that they need.
Thank you very much, yes, we appreciate your words, appreciate your insight, and we will definitely keep that on the forefront. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to address the board tonight? Seeing none, we will now move on to our consent agenda, which tonight consists of seven items. Item G is the minutes of the February seventh regular board meeting. Item H is personnel appointments and adjustments. Item I is bills due and payable between board meetings. Item J, the STEM BEST High Demand HD Program Grant Acceptance. Item K, the AEA Food Purchasing Agreement for twenty-three, twenty-four. Item L, the Junior Achievement Memorandum of Agreement for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And item M, the setting the date of the public hearing for sale of excess property at auction. Are there any of these items that board members would like removed?
J is Jupiter. H, Henry.
I is an ice cream.
Anything else? Okay, so I would like a motion to accept items G, K, L, and M.
So moved?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries six, zero. That brings us to item H, which is the personnel appointments and adjustments. And the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the personnel items as listed.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, please.
Yes, so I know this is probably, could potentially go unanswered. I know Anthony is out now, but I did shoot him an email. I wanted to make sure I said it on the record. Usually about this time, end of March, beginning of April, so we start seeing a lot of resignations or individuals that won't be in our district going forward or not signing contracts. So my question was, where are we at with, are we seeing any resignation? I didn't see a lot of them on the agenda. And then where are we at for hiring for next school year? And also, do we have a deadline for faculty and staff to sign their contracts for the next school year? So I just wanted to get that out there. I did send him an email.
I believe the contracts are going out maybe very soon, and then they're due in April. Is that correct, Jared or Stephanie, do you know?
So in terms of contracts, I just saw what Anthony responded with at six o'clock this evening. He said his target date is April eighth to start distributing contracts. I think it's a three-week turnaround.
Twenty-one days, I think, yeah.
So they would have until the twenty-fourth to turn in their contracts.
Of April.
Of April, yes.
Right, so I think, you know, obviously after that, we'd have a better feel on how many are going to be returning contracts and resigning and that type, retiring. We have, I noticed we are starting to get more retirements in, which we always do at this time of year, so. Anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, one more thing. I also sent the email. I know we've been in conversation with Anthony, and I spoke with Jared as well regarding coaching hire and the position. Just the conversation on what that looks like for future, or it's an interim position is what we're being told. And is that position, will that position be filled for the current school year? And what would that look like going forward? Is it a year-to-year interim basis? And will the, will the position be posted, reposted after the season, or what that looks like? So I'm waiting on response to that. I know we've had communication, so I'm waiting on response to that, just to see what that process looked like. I know that's been an issue or a conversation in the past with, you know, dual roles in coaching and being in administrative role. So just wanted to get some clarification, just to get that out to the community.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to ask if Pam might know this. How many building subs do we have now? So these are two new ones. Do we know how many we have altogether?
Interesting enough, I asked that same question to Anthony.
Oh, you did, did you?
I did, and he said, we have a building sub in all buildings except for Pointer, Becker, and West.
Okay.
And so he's just doing some more investigation about West because he was surprised they didn't have one. And Pointer and Becker were able to hire their own. So at some point, I think that we're trying to get, because that was my question, are we trying to get more in other than the buildings? And I think they're working towards that goal. It just really kind of depends on the, what they need.
Do we still have the ones that they're housed here or wherever, right? And they go to different buildings as well, or no?
I think the goal was to get one in each building.
Yeah, I think the goal was to get one, yeah.
Okay.
So that's why I asked the question, how many did we have currently, so, yeah.
Okay.
So does that mean that, that the current hires that are on this agenda won't be going to those buildings? So these are beside those buildings?
These could be replacements too, I don't know that.
Good question.
Well, it says new position, though. It doesn't say that they're replacing anybody.
But if, but if they weren't, if we didn't have those building subs in those three buildings, these could be the new positions, so.
I think at the beginning, we didn't have.
We didn't have them in all buildings.
We didn't have them in all buildings. I think the left is the three, maybe, that's what I'm understanding.
Not every building had a building sub.
Correct.
Right, right. I think we only, we only had five total, I believe, to start off with.
Right.
And I think it was difficult to find the building sub that wanted to commit to the building to be a sub, you know.
What are the three, I'm sorry, you said that we don't have India?
Pointer, Becker, West.
Thank you, yes.
So these two wouldn't be considered Pointer, Becker, West?
I think we'll have to get Anthony to get us to report on that, to clarify everything because, you know, on number of building subs, and Pam has documented what we'll check with Anthony in the morning. So we'll check with him, and we'll have answers, so.
Thank you.
And we'll get an email sent out, so. All in favor then of approving the personnel adjustments as listed, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion is carried six, zero. The next item is the bills due and payable between board meetings. The superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the bills due and payable and the bills paid between board meetings.
So moved?
Second, and discussion.
Just my quick question was, on page twenty-six, there was a vendor called Sundown, and I was just curious, did anybody know what that is?
I think that the ski resort in Dubuque.
Okay, that's what, that's what I heard, okay.
That the, the class got to go there.
For Life Lab?
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Yep, Life Lab, yep. Any other questions? We have Michael here.
That was it, thanks.
Okay, all in favor then of accepting the bills due and payable, please state aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries six, zero. And that brings us to the last item is Exhibit J, STEM BEST Grant. And that is the superintendent's recommendation that the Board of Education accept with gratitude the forty thousand dollar STEM BEST High Demand HD Program Grant from the Governor's STEM Advisory Council as outlined.
So moved? Second.
And discussion.
Just want to hear a little bit about it. It sounded pretty neat, and I saw Amy here, so.
Amy is here, so.
If anybody wants to tell us about it here. I know our cybersecurity's been a pretty interesting program here lately, so.
We added mentions in actual computer science program as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I was just going to update that because Pam sent an email on this grant. That was actually our previous grants. We actually have a new grant, STEM BEST HD Plus, which is allowing the opportunity for our electrical program. Our instructor just currently got certified for this new electric vehicle called a Switch Lab, which is going to allow them practical application, working with business professionals on our future. So that's actually an update I have for you, so I can send you the information as needed.
And is it the same dollar amount?
Yeah.
Same dollar amount.
Okay.
Yeah, awesome.
Electric vehicle?
Yep.
And will it be worked on at the career center, or what will?
Yeah, they'll have the opportunity to put it together, take it apart throughout the semester.
Super, awesome, that's cool.
Something of the future.
Yeah, awesome, okay.
Just curious, do you know the numbers right now of that program is currently, as far as students?
Yeah, we're actually growing in number with introductory course. We have two of them now, averaging about twelve students in each of those classes. And then the continuation on, it gets kind of more narrowed down as a student decides their, their future path, whether it's electrical or not. This really allows for the encouragement of the work-based learning, the apprenticeship model. We actually are currently working, Amy's in here, she was at the meeting. We were talking about opening up our current partnership with John Deere that's more focused on manufacturing right now and expanding into our electrical program and beyond. So we're excited about that and taking students that are in, you know, junior, senior year and getting them engaged in these apprenticeship models so they can start accumulating those hours and practice, so.
Awesome.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I wish I was in high school.
No.
I really don't.
I might hear that, I might hear that on every visit.
Yeah, okay, thank you so much. So all in favor of accepting the STEM grant, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries six, zero. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Exhibit N, and it's election of enrollment projection consultant. And we have Michael here to give us information. And the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education accept the recommendation and approve the contract bid from RSP Associates for eighteen thousand five hundred dollars as presented.
So moved?
Second.
And go ahead, Michael.
This is kind of a joint effort of administration and the facility committee and the finance committee, and of all the things that are going on and changes made of where students are going to end up. And it also then has a significant impact on future facility planning. So there's a lot of pieces with this, and it was just kind of a joint decision of all of these people to say it would be really nice to have some expertise in just giving some projections on enrollment. And I went out to the UEN schools, and I had heard of this company before. In fact, it's about the only company I'd heard of that had been working with the bigger schools. Because this is not just finding out, you know, hospital birth rates and whatever. It's a study of the whole community of, you know, where developments are being made and the structure of businesses and jobs and all of these things. So I reached out to them just to see what kind of price they were bidding and, you know, at the level, at the level that they gave us a quote at eighteen-five is really not a bidding situation. And just felt like the recommendations of a lot of other districts similar to us that have been very happy with this. You know, I know some of the other districts used it when they were going after a bond issue, or they were trying to finalize a facility plan just to get some background to support their needs. So they are out of Kansas, but they work all over the Midwest, very familiar with Iowa. And I started talking about, well, do you know about the laws that, oh, yes, we know exactly what's going on, and we're following, and there's a lot of concern about that. We're working with other districts. I think I put on here the most recent ones were Waukees and Ames. So we got a proposal from them, and they have already met with some, some of our staff out of Technology and Student Services, and just to kind of get a feel for who they would be working with. And their proposal is saying that they would have results for us in May. And that's the goal. If we can get what they need, we can get to them what they need. So had taken it back to facility, and that was, let's get on this as fast as we can and find out what we can ascertain from the climate of the community and what's changing. And so we felt like this was a good investment, well-recommended by other districts. And I think they've been doing this twenty years, so.
Do they do multiple languages? Do you know, like in their conversing? Do you know, like in their conversing?
No, I have no idea. You mean just to do the results in another language?
Well, if they're, I don't know if they use interviewing or talking to the people in community or anything like that, but just the diversity of our community, just wanting to make sure that they would be, you know, equipped for that.
From that standpoint, so.
Yeah, and I don't know if that's part of their process, but just in case it is, I just wondered about that.
I see that the, the plan is to do a five-year forecast. Is it five usually the magic number? Can they do ten, or that's what typically is five?
Well, doing budget estimates is kind of like with numbers. Two years out and three years out is pretty contained, but five is a real stretch. And ten is basically, you have no idea what you're shooting at, because it can change so much in a decade. But that would be, you know, even the facility committee has talked about saying this will be a good measurement of getting numbers in May and then finding out who we actually have show up in September. So that's going to be a huge.
Validation of the.
Validation, there's a word I'm looking for, yeah. So then, you know, so they're dealing with a new law and new opportunities. And, but it is not unique, because there are several other states and there's a lot of states right now that are in the middle of school choice arguments about legislation. So this will be a real test, I guess, of saying, what do we really have? And, you know, just when, when school choice, even when open enrollment started and our, our diversity plan was put aside, it was like, it's going to take two or three years before we know what the real effect of that is. So, and I think they're looking at that, you know, they'll have to look at all of this from the same standpoint.
I think as Ms. Tyson mentioned, you know, that it'll be good for the community to, to also see, you know, that we are forecasting, we are projecting, because we know that things will and may affect our enrollment and how we run our buildings and our schools and our staffing. So we are, obviously, it's, it's huge, so I'm glad we're getting it in and done very quickly, so.
Very dynamic times.
Yeah.
And we have some unique situations that we've talked about before. You know, WCC is a unique program that even if kids are somewhere else, they may come back for classes there. Even going to a private school and into high school, they come back to WCC. So there's a give and take in this, and I don't think we can view everything as a loss, but it's a cooperation of how students are going to get their full education. And we offer a lot of opportunities.
And even if they're only here a part of the day, we still get, you know, that benefit, so.
Or just here to bowl.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, any other questions for Michael? So all in favor of the recommendation of the bid from RSP, please state aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carried six zero.
Thank you for doing that, Michael, that I would, it was just so proactive, you know?
Yes. The next item is our 2324 Budget Estimate and Publication. And again, we will go with Michael for this, but the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the budget expenditure estimate and the tax levy rate for publication and set the public hearing for the 2324 Certified Budget at 5:00 PM on April tenth, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
And Michael has provided us with packets here, so he will also be doing a PowerPoint behind us, I believe, so.
I will respond to Stacy's comment about being proactive. It's kind of easy when your boss says, would you go do that?
Yeah.
So, here we go. And.
Is this the top of things?
Yeah.
I'm learning.
Are you getting that on your screen?
Yes.
I don't understand why the big crowd didn't stick around for this, but.
Well, and I also said, board, this is how, when we have one meeting a month, everything gets, so, you know, eight-thirty might be our bedtimes.
Okay, I'm going to try to go through this kind of rapidly, because most of you have seen this, but sometimes it's. What's that?
Do you like that?
Yeah. I'll try to be a little closer. So really what this presentation does is it answers some questions. Where does a school budget come from? How is it measured? And then how much of it is, comes from the state? And how much of it comes from property tax? And how does that get calculated? And then what fills out the rest of it? And then a basic plan of how much do we think we need to set aside name to spend next year? So it just kind of addresses a few separate issues. So this. Get all the right things out here. I'm used to a mouse that doesn't have a cord on it. Rearrange here, maybe I can get this to work. And what is happening? Let's try this again. That was a really fast presentation. I can just look at the screen. Thank you. Yeah, yeah. No, that's kind of like the dreams you have. Sometimes you're in the front of people and it's a nightmare. And sometimes all of a sudden, the expert shows up and you go, okay.
Nightmare you woke up.
Yeah, okay. So we have different kinds of funds. These are all the different funds that we deal with. And the ones that we're talking about tonight are the ones that are funded by property tax. The General Fund, the Management Fund, and the Pipple Fund, all have property tax. This is a summary of the enrollment over the last five years. And this includes, because we count the kids that open enroll out. They're still our kids and we have to pass money to other districts, but they are on our account. So this is our five-year history. And this is, the last count we had was October of twenty-two, and that determines how the budget is calculated for twenty-three, twenty-four. Well, how did I lose the whole presentation? Well, when I did that, they all went blank, so I just have to reload it. Or did it just put? Yeah, it did, yeah, there we go. Well, you get rusty when you haven't been here a while, right? Okay, so.
We know your expertise, Michael.
We also have a history of our financial indicators, basically what our allowable expenditures are, and that's what the formula generates. And then we have cash of what we actually have in the bank as of June thirtieth. But then the fund balance is, what would we have left on June thirtieth if we paid all the bills that we have to pay in the summer for teachers? Because it all applies to the year before. So to get those close to each other is really the minimal measure that you want to work toward. And you can see in the, in the past, we were ten million dollars apart in some of those years on those different balances. But we have worked to bring those back into a more healthy situation.
Michael, real quick, what would be, what was the reason why there was a ten million dollar gap?
Yeah, that's, that's about a twenty-minute conversation, but it really is the historic. It really is a historical financial decisions of the district depending on what was going on at the time, what the state was giving us in new money every year. You know, there was a few years just before this that we were cutting budgets. So it's just, it's just a matter of, the cash is always going to be higher. If that isn't a little higher than everything else, then you have trouble paying your summer bills, so.
I only asked that question so we don't go back to that, so, you know, not to repeat history. That was why I was asking that question, like.
Yeah, well, that is the issue of now coming out of the ESAR years, because we will finish that, most of it by the end of this year in twenty-two, twenty-three, and then it will be totally all used up in twenty-three, twenty-four. But by the way we used it, we built up some of our ending balances, so we'll be able to gradually use that as we go forward. So that is the goal of my efforts of putting this together. Where are we going to be in five years? So these things don't just start collapsing.
Thank you.
Okay, so the, the formula for the General Fund, we got allowable growth or state supplemental aid of three percent. That's what the legislative, the legislators passed. Last year, twenty-two, twenty-three, I'm going to use numbers for the years or else you get confused with this year, next year, last year, which one am I talking about? So in twenty-two, twenty-three, the, the state assigned cost was seven thousand four thirteen, so you add three percent to that, it, it comes out to seventy-six, thirty-five. So we get to calculate seven thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars for every student that we have. And that's one of the measurements that just go by formula, and you'll see that in a minute here. And that's what this is. So if you take our enrollment times that seven, seven thousand six thirty-five, it's a little over eighty-one million dollars. Of that, we also add our ELL weighting, our at-risk weighting of two-point-six million. The special ed weighting is a little over seventeen million. And then we have categorical funds, which are teacher salary supplement, TQPD, teacher leadership compensation, and class size is twelve and a half million. And then what we pay the AEA is about six million. This is a little high, because the state has not finalized these numbers yet. And they normally take away, they normally take about, away about half a million dollars from the AEA. They've been doing it for about ten years. But these are the numbers we have that are alive right now. And then there are overages for open enrollment, ELL. These are things that you approve in December when enrollment increases or ELL numbers increase and they give us more authority. That's estimated at three-point-five, and at-risk program would be expo. And several other programs that come with that funding, that's just under four million dollars. So those are the components that go from eighty million to a hundred and twenty-seven million. Those are all formulas by enrollment. There's no control over any of those, that's just what, just what we are. So then that number carries forward, the hundred and twenty-seven, and you take the carryover balance from the year before, forty-five million is the estimate of what we're going to carry over from twenty-two, twenty-three. And the instructional support and preschool are kind of unique in this formula. They don't apply to anything else. Instructional support is all state aid, preschool, I'm sorry, the other way. Instructional support is a local decision by every board to levy this, and it's all property tax, and the preschool is all state aid. And then all of the other miscellaneous money, interest, Title I, all of the grants that we have, and this was the ESAR money as well, it's over thirty million dollars. So now the one-twenty-seven goes to two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollars. That's our overall budget maximum that we can spend, that we're, we are setting ourselves for that.
Now the ESAR goes away, correct?
There'll be a little bit left of it in twenty-three, twenty-four. But the majority of the heavy full year is not going to be there.
Right, thank you.
For next year. So when I talked about the components, now we've got that total. How much of it is property tax and how much of it is state aid? And this is where it's calculated. Every district has to levy five dollars and forty cents of property tax. It's called the uniform levy, and that is property tax of just fifteen million for us. You, and then they take the state, whatever that number is, and you go up to eighty-eight point four percent of the total, that's how much state aid you get. Ninety-one million is where we're at. And then what's ever left to get that last eleven point six percent is the extra property tax. So there's a base one, the state aid, and then what's ever left to get to a hundred percent, that's what we have to raise then again, so it's eighteen million. But we have a special situation because of Iowa's, because of Waterloo's rankings among all the school districts. And first of all, we're a poor valuation district. So if you look at the average valuation per student of Waterloo, we are in the lower third of what the whole state is. And if you take a Waukees, or you take a Johnston, or Iowa City, they're going to be high. So because of that, we get some credits against property tax, so it's not so hard on the property tax and on the property owners. So there's two adjustments for that, and those are the big numbers. And then there's a couple of small ones that have been around for a long time that they just leave there. So it's about six-point-five million. So, it's about $6.5 million that we get, we get as a credit. So, I'm just showing you how that works. So, the uniform levy is still 15 million, the state aid is 91, well, let's go to the top, the blue. The property tax is 18 million, but you get to take the credit, so now you're down to 11. So, that's 65, 6.5 million gets added to the state aid. So, that becomes 97, or almost 98 million, rather than 91. So, they calculate by that formula, but then they give us a credit for where we are in our rankings in the state, and they add that back to our state aid, and it doesn't go against our property tax rate. So, that's how you get the, that's how you get the separation of, well, how much of it is property tax, how much of it is state aid? It's what follows this formula. So, once you get the amount of money you have to charge for property tax, the rate is determined by what your property valuation is. So, whatever you want to raise, divided by the valuation gives you your tax rate. And on most of these, well, three of these, the valuation went up, and that's pretty common, 2% to 3%. Well, this year, it went down almost 3%. So, if you're levying the same amount of money, but there's less valuation, that drives the rate up. Normally, you have to have about a 2% or 3% increase in valuation for your rate to stay the same. But throughout the formula that we're dealing with, the drop in valuation has two effects, just like what I said, it'll drive the regular tax rate up, but then you also have PEPAL, which the tax rate is 33 and 67, it doesn't matter what the valuation is. So, if the valuation drops, the askings for 33 cents and 67 cents is going to drop too, so it kind of offsets the effect on the property tax rates. I was going to make a comment about the city, but I don't want to, I don't want to confuse the issue. So, in the process of going through all of these things with the finance committee, there are only a couple of things that the district really has a lot of control with. And in speaking about the effect of possible changes or increases of what we could have done, long story short, the decision was, let's keep the tax rate the same. So, we did 1336 last year in '22, '23, and we're recommending 1336 for '23, '24. So, the tax rate will not go up. And if you look at the previous slide again, last year we levied $38.9 million, and this year we're levying $38 million. So, it's going down almost $900,000. So, that's the headline. The tax rate stays the same, and the askings go down. I need to make sure she was listening. You know, that has been a priority of this board for quite a number of years, and really part of that was just the way they changed the formula at the state, when the Republicans determined that they wanted tax reform and tax breaks, they changed the formula, so if you were staying about the same, it would go down automatically. Because what they were doing is, if you got a 3% SSA or allowable growth, they didn't add that to that tax formula. The state said, nope, we're not going to have the taxpayers pay that, the state is going to take that burden. So, every year, the state aid has gone up by at least that amount of what our new money was from the, from the allowable growth. So, they have been protecting taxpayers for several years, and I didn't look up to see how long, but it's been most of the time I've been here. So, part of it has been a very determined way to look at this, that that's what we wanted to do as a district, was keep it level, or reduce it if we could. And the formula worked into that with what this, what the governor and the legislators were doing with tax reform, so it's kind of been a joint effort. But you can see that we've had quite a drop, just in six years of 1457 to 1336. Some of that's been your decisions, some of them has been, that's just what the formula does. So, this is just a breakout of what, how the tax rate applies to all of the funds that do, that are governed by property tax, with the instructional support, which is part of the general fund, about 31 million of that is about 11% or $11, and then management is $1.17, and the two PEPPALS is another dollar, so that's how we get to $13.36. That's for all the funds, the 1336, it's not just the general fund. So then that shows also the dollar values that go with that. I usually do some comparisons of last year's rate, last year's rate to this year's rate, but they're so even, it really doesn't make a lot of difference with the rollbacks. So, just as an example here, for a $100,000 house, and a rollback, what it means, if you've got $100,000 worth of value, you only pay 54% of that. So, you pay for five, or $54,000 worth of value, not 100, times the 36, 1336. So, when it's the same rate and the rollback hardly changed, last year's estimate for a residential for each 100,000 of value, or 54,000, 540,000 of value, it was $723. And the new calculation is 730, so it's basically flat. So, the last part of what we talked about, what does these documents determine? It determines how much we're raising by formula, it determines how much is property tax and state aid, and of course, all of our miscellaneous just comes in on its own, a grant, or a federal program, or whatever. So, the last part, the, the third part of this puzzle is, how much do we budget for next year? So, putting in the trends of what's happened over the last two years, and then looking at where we're going next year. The estimate for '22, '23 in the general fund is 158 million, and I'm projecting 167 million for next year, from the standpoint that you always budget a little conservative, and say, I don't think we're going to spend quite that much, but it's just kind of our limit, and we have money to back it all up. It just, even if we did budget real tight and had to raise that later, we could, it's a budget amendment. But this has kind of been the practice that we have used for many years of budgeting, a little more than we think we're going to spend, just to give us a little cushion. But when we do our budget internally, we budget to actuals, not saying, oh wow, we have 167 to spend. No, we, we spend what we need to spend, but this just gives us some, some leeway. So, as you can see, there's a, there's an increase there, the other two funds are pretty flat. The sales tax went from 32 million because we borrowed money last year, and had to pay it back, had to, it was actually refinancing, so it was like we bought it and paid part of it back. That's why it was, why 32 million was so high in that year. This year, we're not, we may not have any borrow, but we're going to have some expenses to finish central. And where we go from there, if we happen to do something extensive in '23, '24 in building, we would probably have to amend the budget. But it doesn't make sense to do that until the plan is in place. PEPPALS up a little bit from last year, debt service is a little less, 5 million less.
What is debt service?
What is debt service?
Yeah, I don't want to sound dumb, but.
Debt service is a partner fund with SAVE. So, SAVE raises the money through the one cent, but when you pay off a bond, or make a bond payment, it has to be transferred into the debt service account, so it can be very evident. You know, you can't just bury it in the other one, and I think it's more of an issue of it keeps the accountants honest of saying, I don't want to lose my debt payment in the middle of another budget, and then when the payment comes around, I go, ah, I didn't have that set aside. And part of it is, when you, when you sell a bond, the companies that are controlling it, the banks that are controlling the money coming in, they will take monthly deductions out of your SAVE money, and stick it in the debt service fund, just to say, we will help you remember this. But that money all earns interest, and, you know, so, they're being responsible with that too, but it just gives that credibility and the planning, you know, it's, it's not like somebody managing their own money. It's always subject to change. There's new board members, there's new superintendents, there's new business managers, and if you don't have the structure in place for it to work, something can get lost in the, in the accounting mechanism, so it's just safeguards, you know, for public money.
So, so along the lines of debt service, what would be under management?
Management is the fund that we pay for property and liability insurance, and we pay for, if we, in years past, we had some early retirement incentives. But what we're really dealing with, with management is, the cost of insurance is going up, just from inflation, whatever, so we've got some cushion in there right now, but we know it's going to continue to go up. And actually, the more value we have in our buildings, the insurance is, goes up accordingly, so our insurance rates over the last 15 years have gone up quite a bit, just because of the value of all the property we now have. Here I am hitting the wrong. Okay. So, this is what is the action of the board tonight, is a motion to approve, to accept the 1336-062 as the published rate, and the total maximum expenditures of 208,68,380. That's your ceiling of what you can spend throughout all of the different funds, but we have more money than that, so it could be amended if it needed to be, but that's how we're setting it. So, what happens in the next stages? Tonight, you're approving those estimates, it will be published in the paper, and it was the second one I gave you, the smaller one, that front page is what will show up in the paper. So, as I'm thinking of it, when you look at this, this is all the funds combined. This is all the revenue we're getting for taxes. So, one of the things that you can look at is line one in budget, in budget year '24, those first two lines add up to 38,009,608. So, that's the property tax that's going into all the funds, not just the general fund. So, this is a summary of what the district has actually spent in all the funds in '22, it's a reestimate of what we're going to spend in '23, and it's the projection of what we're setting as a budget for '24. And if you go down to line 36, because I always get this question, what's the maximum budget? It's line 36, that 208,068,380, that's our total maximum expenditures. And if you want to dig into any of these numbers, it's behind the other pages. But this, again, if you look at page two in that packet, and go down to the line 22, it's showing that total again of 38,000, 38 million, 9,687, and the tax rate is 1336.
Now, Michael, do you believe in the motion that we have right now, which is approving the budget? Should we actually also include the total budget maximum and the budget versus how we have it? We could do a friendly amendment to include those, because right now we just have the rate, I mean, or does that not matter as much since it's?
No, you have to approve, you need to approve the rate, the maximum amount, and that the hearing is scheduled for April 10th at 5:00.
So.
So, that's what I was going through on here, and interrupted myself, so on April 10th, you'll have a public hearing, anybody can come and comment on this, and then the board will take action to say, yes, this is what we're going to approve. And then I have to get all of this paperwork to the Black Hawk County auditor by May 1st. And if you remember, April 15th has always been the deadline, but because they had that issue with property tax adjustment and the rollbacks, they extended it for two more weeks, because the county auditors had to do a whole bunch of work to get stuff reset.
Right, and if, if need be, we could lower this, but we cannot raise it.
Correct.
Okay. Well, and I know we discussed this in finance, and this is like the 11th year in a row that we have either been flat or lowered the property tax rate. So, I, I think that we are being fiscally prudent, and, and working to keep our portion, and indeed, this is the schools' portion of the. in our, indeed, this is the school's portion of the tax rate. It doesn't include the city and the county. But we have been very prudent in keeping our rate level or lower. So I commend staff and, you know, for doing that because we're still delivering the same services equally. Good job, Michael. Thank you. That was very insightful. Does anybody have any questions?
No, I just wanted to say every year I understand more and I followed a lot of that's one, so thank you, Michael.
Go ahead. Okay, so all in favor of accepting this, well, we'll do a friendly amendment. So who moved in second?
I think I moved.
It was Jesse moved and India second.
Okay, so are you both okay? That we include the budget total in the actual recommendation?
208. Yes.
And I also, I second amend.
Pam is finishing it up, just one second here. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, so the amended motion would be that the Board of Education approve the budget maximum expenditure estimate of, okay, I have to count back here.
208 million.
208 million dollars, 60, 208 million, 68,380. And the tax levy rate of 13.36064 per thousand dollar taxable valuation for publication and set the public hearing for the 2022, 2023, 2024 certified budget at 5:00 PM on April 10, 2023.
It's 36062.
062, 36062, okay.
Yep, I think we're good. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries 6-0, so that will be our rate. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Very much.
Yes, nice detail.
Next item on.
Next item on our agenda tonight will be the student transportation bids. And I see we have Zach here and, and Sarah and Michael to answer any questions. And the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the Facilities Committee and approve the contract for '23 through '26 student transportation services to First Student, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And discussion, please. Thank you for your patience, and we have a long meeting tonight. I apologize.
Nope, no problem. I'm hoping Michael wore everyone out, so it'll go smoother from here. I just first want to introduce, those of you who haven't met Sarah Mayer. She is the Transportation Manager for the District. And we do have Chris Coyle with First Student as well. So we've had a lot of internal discussions on this transportation with the RFP. I will note that who we're recommending to the board to approve, that they weren't the cheapest or the lowest bidder, but we felt that service was of big importance for the district, and that's why we chose First Student. So if anyone has any questions.
So just remind us and the public, first, we used to have First Star, and how many years ago was that approximately?
Yeah, that was, I think we changed back over in 2012. So we've been with Durham for 10 years roughly. First Student was previous to that.
Right. I just wondered, you know, some of our issues have been with after-school transportation and just wondering if there are some real innovative, new ways that we can provide those services or what does First Student stance on that?
Without knowing all of the challenges, I think everything begins and ends with communications. That is one of the things that we, we had a pre-launch meeting with Zach and team, and that was one thing that we, we talked about, the multi-layered part of communications that we do in preparation for, you know, different challenges that we see out there. You know, we're, there's no kidding that there's a nationwide challenge when it comes to buying or finding drivers. And so we want to be number one, you know, really forthright and transparent on that. And that way, we can make any communications, any challenges, any adjustments that we need to do. But I think coming in with a solid plan and how we're going to recruit and retain the current drivers and monitors is, is job one. That's job one.
Have you been successful in other districts in, you know, potential campaigns or marketing campaigns to get drivers and to retain drivers?
Yes, ma'am. Great, great question. We actually just got the Ankeny contract over this past, past school year and maintain a positive, I think we're about five drivers above where we should be at this point. So it really comes down to is the partnership we have with, you know, obviously the school district, that's going to be a key, that we're going to be leveraging that as well as bringing in, I've got a field recruiter that is based out of the Des Moines area that she'll be on site to, to help a lot of the process. And, and, you know, it's, it's, it's a great opportunity to, to really build that partnership.
And how does the transition work with the summer school in July, with you guys starting July 1? Is that correct?
Yeah, so currently, our contract with, our current contractor ends July 31st. But we are working internally to maybe adjust that to July 1st, just to help with the transition of summer school and not trying to get it in the middle of it between two different companies.
And then last question, typically, are three-year contracts typical?
Yes, yes, ma'am, that's correct. I come from Illinois, that's where I'm based out of, and it's the three plus two, two being two one-year extensions.
What is, what is your pay rate compared to like other companies that you're able to have better retention?
Right, so based off of, that's all based off of the collective bargaining agreement. So we have to go through that process with the labor partner. And based off of what we've seen, we've, we've covered what they are currently at and got a little bit of security there as well, so.
Remind me, did we decide to do the, like, the family app option with this?
Yes, ma'am, that's part of that.
Yeah, just kind of explain that to me.
Yeah, great question. Again, that communications piece that we were talking about, we actually have, if I may, take it, multi-layered that we have. First, First View is what you're asking for, and that is the parent app, where's my bus app, if you want to call it that. And that, that basically works with our operating system where we go in and we update the information based on the driver to the bus and gives periodic updates to the parents. Also gives what we call a district dashboard where any authorized user at the district level or school can go in there and look up and, and see where the status of certain buses are. And also allows a communication out to specifically a school bus or school-wide or district-wide. So if we have a message that goes out updating on any kind of traffic issues or if there's an, you know, an emergency, certain situation, we can push that out. And so that doesn't go by text, it's actually an app that the parents download and then that, that information will be pushed out to the parents. So great question on that. And then the other thing that we do have is just a feedback from, from the community, from your stakeholders. They can go, it's all web-based, that they can provide us feedback on how our drivers are doing, any suggestions, even some praise for, for the drivers. So the good thing about that is it's, all comes in through our database, web base, and we have access to it as well as our region and corporate level. So there's always that second set, second, third set of eyes on that, sort of, and kind of feedback.
Sounds good. That sounds great. So when we make this transition in the fall, how is that communication being made to the families, we, you know, how's that, what does that look like?
That'll be part of what we work on with Zach and his team on exactly how that is. The good thing is, is, you know, while we have a location, we've got a multi-layered level of support. For First View, we've got a rollout team that's corporate level, that they've done hundreds of these rollouts. So great opportunity to get that out and, and push the message along with Zach's, you know, point of contact to get the information out.
We should make sure that app, we advertise that app during student registration, make sure that, you know, families know about it, because it provides support if you need help getting it set up, because maybe some are not as technical savvy setters or, or language, or language gaps who may need to close.
Different languages, yeah. Do you have cameras on your buses?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. I believe, three, yeah, three, three cameras. So basically, it'll be pointing down the service door, one from the rear, one at the bulkhead pointed backwards typically is where, how those are set up.
Does it include audio?
Yes, that's correct. High definition.
I'm sorry, there's, there's usually a driver, and then is there always another person on the bus as well or just?
Depends on the route, you're talking about the bus aids. Yeah, it depends on the route.
Are the bus aids ours or they, because I, I remember where yours, it's been different, so.
They're, they're buses.
It's there.
Yeah, they, they're part of ours.
Okay, so that just is determined based on whatever the need is for that route, correct?
Through Sarah and, yep.
Okay.
It could be per student, too.
Got it, thank you.
And are there seat belts or no?
Yes, ma'am. Anything after, I forget what year, is required by state law.
All right. All right, any other questions? All right. All in favor of supporting the contract with First Student, please state aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries 6-0. We welcome and we look forward to working with you. Keep the communication going. Thank you. Okay. Okay, now, our next exhibit is Exhibit R, which is Classroom Interactive Display Purchase. And I see Matt O'Brien walking towards me, so he's the guy tonight. And the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the purchase of Box Light Mimo Pro Series for 75-foot interactive display mounts and carts from Bloom at a total cost of $488,975.73. And the installation of said displays by Communications Engineering Company at a cost of $112,457.62.
Can you say it again?
Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you very much, friends. Okay, go ahead, Matt.
You always love my items, just because you get to read such fun stuff, right?
The numbers are just intriguing. Thank you.
So a standard tool in any classroom is some sort of interactive display. The district, as, as the board knows, started installing these in classrooms back in 2008 with Promethean Active Boards, back in 2008. So you can do the math and see that those are quite old at this point. We installed those over a few-year period. They're now well over a decade old, past their useful life, so we've been working on replacing those and have five elementary schools left that have not received new interactive panels. So the proposal before you tonight is to finish the district with replacing those original active boards with new interactive displays, essentially large touchscreen TVs that have their own operating system that can be used with a computer or they can be used independently as well. So this is an item that's come before the board before. The difference tonight is the recommendation in product. As the board might remember, we have been installing Promethean Active Panels, which is, Promethean is a, a brand name and Active Panel is their model of, of interactive displays. And as you saw, the proposal before you tonight is for a different, a competitor product. Why that came to be is Promethean's latest version of the Active Panel, which was installed at WCC, is quite a bit different from their earlier versions that have been installed at all of our other schools. And quite honestly, has received, I'll say, mixed feedback from teachers, which was enough feedback that just caused us to see what else was out there, consider alternatives because the, the platform, their current offering is so different from their previous offering that's installed at the rest of our schools. So what we actually did was visited two Iowa school districts and looked at two competitor products. From there, narrowed it down to a single product, which was the Box Light Mimo. And basically, put the Box Light Mimo and the Promethean Active Panel, the newest version of that, kind of head-to-head. We had a demo model of both of those. And we invited several focus groups to give us feedback. Focus groups of wireless school staff, included a number of teachers, included instructional coaches and some principals as well at the five schools that are due to have these installed. And that feedback from the focus group was pretty unanimous. You can see I kind of put, we did a, kind of a, a point collection from the, each person that attended the focus group and then kind of added all of the points together. So out of a possible 880 points, the Active Panel received 440, possible of those 880, and the Box Light Mimo received 770. So quite a widespread. The, the actual qualitative feedback that we heard from folks was, was pretty heavily weighted towards the Box Light Mimo as well. So with that feedback, that's the negotiations that we started, those are the bids that we solicited, and we were quite thrilled with the bids that we got back. So we believe before you tonight is a great solution at an even lower price than we've been paying previously for the Promethean Active Panels.
So I just have a couple of questions. In the past, you know, one of the reasons, one of the reasons that we've stuck with Promethean is, you know, you've talked about the ease of installation and everything. And also, this would have different programming, is that what you're saying as well? Like, is it? As far as?
Yeah, so the difference really is the software because they're both 75-inch interactive displays, right? So you're right, the difference is very much the software. And I'll say, you're absolutely correct, one of the big reasons why, in addition to, we actually did a teacher focus group previously, which ultimately had selected the Promethean Active Panel when we originally started installing those. One of the other reasons was what we perceived to be the ease of transition for teachers. They had quite a few what are called flip charts, which is kind of Promethean's proprietary software, think like a slide deck type of thing, interactive slide deck that were created. Quite honestly, that's really changed, particularly at the elementary level as new curriculum has been adopted. That's really not an issue any longer. So that really, while that was, you know, a significant point years ago when we were making these previous decisions, now most, a lot of our teachers obviously have turned over and our Ed Services team have also provided new materials with new curriculum adoptions. In fact, some of the new, the new science adoption that's being looked at, I believe, also comes with a Google, with Google Slide Deck, similar to what has been created for our literacy and our math adoptions as well. So really, those slide decks can be used on any platform and thus, that's, that's not an issue any longer.
And so you won't have, I know back, back, we talked about that you'd have to do, like, changes in electrical and all this stuff because going from Promethean to a different company would have been a different shape, different, you know, everything.
Sure, so I think what you're thinking of, Stacy, is we kind of looked at interactive projectors, which are like mounted to the ceiling versus interactive displays, which are actually mounted to the wall, which is where our wiring currently is. So the wiring itself, the installation, actually, we bid both of those. We actually, when we bid this out, said it's really going to be either one, and to the installers, that piece doesn't matter because either one was a similar interactive display on an adjustable mount. Had we instead looked at interactive projectors, then you're absolutely correct, it would have been a completely different story. Installation would have been a completely different ballgame, much more expensive for that reason.
Will this cause any problems as far as like maintenance or anything, since you're going to have, not be able to like cannibalize old stuff or whatever, or parts or whatever? I mean, the price difference is significant enough, I think you can probably buy actually what you need, you know?
Yeah, so, so you raise a decent point. I will tell you that ideally, in a perfect world, we would have just a single platform. So certainly, there are advantages. So certainly, there are advantages when you look at total cost of ownership to having a single platform, both in terms of, as you said, parts and just getting replacements, but also just in terms of just maintenance and pushing out updates to the systems, those type of things as well. That said, Promethean has a new platform than what they're currently, what we have in our rest of our buildings anyway. So, we were really looking at having kind of two different platforms irregardless of which direction that we went.
I think this was great.
And really, you look at it, you know, a lot of people used to try to commonize the standard, but you know, with, you know, supply chain availability, we had to make a lot of adjustments in a lot of different areas where, you know, we use the brand, but it's not available, we'd have to get something else.
For sure.
And lead time and those things have an impact on, on decisions that maybe would deviate us from a standard path, perhaps.
Absolutely, and, and obviously, the cost, which kind of ties into supply chain pieces, that's part of it. And then I'd also like to just highlight, you know, the piece that really drove looking was instructional and feedback that we got from teachers, and looking at our instructional needs as well. So I do also have to give props to the Ed Services folks, to Ron Moreland, Ryan Christopherson, both of which were huge on helping us evaluate that from the instructional needs viewpoint as well, which was a big deal.
What is delivery time of these?
So we're told we should get them in time, hopefully, May, May-ish, so in time for summer installation is the last estimate that I've gotten. And to Jesse's point, had that not been the case, that the recommendation before you may be different tonight, but that's, that's obviously, at this point, we should be on track.
Do we have something in clause to hold them to that, so that we have a end date delivery time that we have to have?
We don't, I'll tell you, that's really difficult to get vendors to actually, particular tech vendors to get, to commit to that. I really haven't seen that as a standard clause that districts have been able to do. But, they've actually gone so far as telling me how many units they have in the United States, which is the big deal with this, obviously. If it's overseas, it's a different ballgame with these huge units. So, that's why we wanted to get it before you in March, even though we had a really long agenda, just so we could get the orders in, get in line, and we feel pretty confident that we should get them.
And will the PD be any much different on this? I mean, is staff, can they need PD on this?
There will absolutely be PD, I think it'll look very similar. Stephanie's team obviously will work on that. I'll tell you what they did last year is, since it's installed over the summer, they can use the first several school, the first several teacher work session days to do some PD. And then Ryan and Ron last year also followed that up with meeting with PLCs and kind of smaller group, kind of supplementing the larger group PD for teachers, too. And that seemed to work really well with the previous five elementaries.
For those schools that you kind of looked at, who are, have the Box Light, do they also give, or did you look at other schools who have this product already?
Yeah, we traveled to Dubuque, which has had this for a number of years. Their environment is a little bit different than ours. They're not a Google shop such as we are, so some of the integration pieces, then we kind of explored ourselves, but we absolutely got great feedback from the Dubuque staff, they've been very happy with them.
I was just going to pick you back on the maintenance part, like, you know, did they comment on, like, if it breaks down, the wait time before getting it fixed, things of that nature?
So, it's, the wait time itself is pretty similar. And what you actually see with, with each of these proposals is we typically do one, I don't want to say spare, because it is used, but we have one mobile per building, because when this truly breaks down, you know, it's impossible. It's not like just tech comes over and changes a projector or something along those lines. So, wait times seem to be pretty similar than Promethean, but the warranty period itself actually outlasted Promethean. It's actually a five-year warranty period, which Dubuque raved about. They said support had been really good from the company, so we were happy to hear that.
Five years is about half your life, anyway.
Exactly, exactly, half or potentially a little over half of the lifespan, which is great. You bet.
Any more questions for Matt?
No, just thanks for looking outside the box, and this is a great one.
So all in favor of approving the purchase of the Box Light Mini Pro Series, please state aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries six zero. Thank you, Matt.
Thanks for sticking around.
The next item is.
You can stick around again.
One more.
He's not going to leave. Exhibit S, which is another technology purchase, device bid summary that we have before us. Why am I not moving? Here we go. The superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the purchase of 2,545 Chromebooks and 130 laptops from Dell at a total cost of $741,985. Four-fifty-two-in-one Chromebooks from CDWG at a total cost of $301,050. Server equipment from Dell at a total cost of $31,476.62. And sixteen-hundred-and-forty carrying cases from CDWG at a total cost of $27,470.
So moved.
Six.
And Matt?
Lots more numbers for you to read again.
I, I'm just digging this.
So this one is a fairly standard purchase, in that I do come before you once in the spring every year for our, for our annual device replacement cycle. So, this is this year's package. So, on the student side, every year, we bring to you Chromebooks to replace incoming sixth and ninth graders. So that's included in the package. Also included this year, we have two elementaries whose Chromebooks are due for replacement. So, Becker and Irving Chromebooks are included in this package. And on the staff side, it's a little larger than normal. Actually, all of our middle schools and several of our elementary school teacher devices are due for replacement as well. So, I guess two slightly abnormal things on the, on the staff side. One is just the, the volume of it, just because of the way the cycle is played out. And the second is, this year, we actually gave staff members a choice between the typical Windows-based laptop that we typically offer teachers, as well as a two-in-one Chromebook, which, from a performance perspective, like the guts of it, is very similar to a Windows laptop, but it's a two-in-one touchscreen, so if this is actually the device here, it's, you know, standard, basically touchscreen device, but then it also flips over and can be used as a tablet as well.
Is that the same one the kids get, or?
It is not at all the same one the kids get. From a performance perspective, so there's kind of this spectrum, and students are on the, I guess I'll just say, lower end of the spectrum. This is on the, in terms of performance, the other end of the perspective, very similar in terms of memory and processor, that type of thing, to what teachers typically get on the Windows side. It's just Chrome, it has a much lower total cost of ownership than, than Windows does. By the time you also look at support for it, as well as additional licenses, which aren't included in the cost of the device, like security licenses. So, a number of Iowa districts have been pivoting away from Windows and towards Chrome for staff devices. This is part of kind of our continued pivot. I mean, you've seen our number of Windows devices continue to decline, and our number of Chrome devices continue to climb. This is certainly going to continue that momentum, but we also wanted to ease that choice in and give teachers a choice. So, that's, that's what we did this year, and those are represented in the numbers before you.
How is the theft and, you know, damage to the student Chromebooks? Is it, you know, how has that been in the district compared to other years?
It is, it's not increasing, it's still very much happens. I polled numbers just to kind of see where we were at this year. And, you know, we're in the triple digits, not the four digits, in terms of the number of actual billable incidences that we've had for our Chromebooks. So at this, as of this weekend, when I pulled the numbers, we were in the, you know, eight-hundred or so range in terms of number of devices that we've actually, number of, I shouldn't say number of devices, because in some cases, there might have been one student who had a device that got more than one billing. So those are actually fee instances that we've had this school year in the eight-hundred range for, for students. So, it certainly, it happens, and we're not unique. I think we're on par to other districts, so those numbers, that seems like a big number. But, when you take that into account to the, the number of devices that we have and look comparatively to other districts, it's, it's a thing, I know Dr. Smith and I had conversations, you know, that's the thing he's seen at other Iowa districts, that's certainly something that we as tech directors talk about, and I think it's on par with what other districts are seeing.
Do you, do you see most of the families taking advantage of the insurance option? And how did that figure into those?
It's definitely not most, that number I actually did not poll. In the past, it's been in the thirty to forty percent, off the top of my head. So it's, it's definitely not the majority that choose to actually follow through with that. But, I would say significant minority that do.
With that said, did that eight-hundred number include lost?
It does, it includes any billable instance. So whether that just be the, like, the most common one that we have is a lost charger, right? That's the thing that's lost most often. So that, every time a charger's lost and billed at the secondary level, that would also be one of those incidences as well.
Okay, what is your recovery on your billable incidents?
Good question.
The first, it's, it's pretty low for the first year. Then typically, as they get up to high school and there start to be consequences of not being able to attend dances with outstanding fees and whatnot, that's typically when that picks up. So, middle school in particular is, is really low. And then certainly, as they move on, they're, move on their career with us, then that, that continues to increase. And it's like any other fee, right? So, whether that be, you know, a book fee, or any other fee that gets attached to a student, it's, it's really no different than any other fee, it just goes on the student's account while, while they're with us.
Kind of like a speeding ticket, right?
What do you know about that?
As far as like the lost chargers, the, like, you know, these are, you're replacing a bunch of, do you keep all your chargers, then, from the Chromebooks that are being, that are at the end of their life cycle to use? If somebody loses one with a new one, or, I mean, they're all still compatible, right?
The newer ones are. The older models, actually, that weren't USBC, were proprietary, so those actually were tied to a model. But you're right, now that we're retiring the Model 3100, then yes, the newer ones are, and then absolutely, we would not give those away. Though I will say, we, we use a lot of those as well, or oftentimes, those become like loner chargers, where if the kid just lost it for a day, then that's a charger that, you know, the media center can loan out for the day, or the classroom can have for a day, or we'll have extra chargers on hand for ISAS, for example, for obviously, high-stakes things such as that nature. So, typically, we use the new chargers, the actual billable ones, and the old ones, we absolutely find repurposes like those.
Perfect, thank you.
You bet.
Just one last question, and I'm curious, just know what part of the percentage of the, like, technology budget allocated for like replacement or billable items, like the ten percent, twenty percent, do you know?
So it's actually a separate budget line item out of what, so like, all of these, the equipment comes out of ESER, where that's actually a separate special inventory line item. It's, it's really small in the scheme of things, like I would say off the top of my head, certainly a single digits in terms of percent. But it is a separate budget line item, because it's a different funding source.
Great, thank you.
You bet.
Okay, any more questions for Matt? All right, so all in favor of approving the Chromebooks and laptops, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries six zero. Thank you very much, Matt. Okay, now we are on to Exhibit T. And this is the Central Middle School Remodel Waterloo Career Center Expansion Change Order. The superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve Central Middle School Remodel Waterloo Career Center Expansion Project Change Order Number Twelve, as presented as an add of $255,821.77. And we have Zach and Kate, yeah, thank you. We have Zach and Kate here, who have patiently waited for hours, literally, to come and let us know about this change order. So, welcome, both of you.
Yes.
Thank you, for your patience.
No problem. I will let Kate take over on this one, and we'll go from there.
She's waited patiently.
Yes.
Okay. This change order happened at the request, at the discussion with the roofing contractor. The roofing contractor was up on the roof, kind of checking things out, and suggested an alternative plan about which part of the roof gets replaced and which does not. Evidently, there was a section of the roof that, let me go backwards. When we did the original documents, the idea was to replace any of the old built-up roof with the kind of ballasted gravel on it, with rubber membrane roof. So the goal was to get rid of, rid of as much of the built-up roof as we could. Once the contractor was on the roof, really investigating things, he noticed that a section of the roof, existing roof that had rubber membrane on it, was actually kind of a questionable installation. I'll just leave it at that, that was done some years back. And he, and Zach went back and looked at the warranties on the built-up roof, and kind of played this shuffle game to see what made sense, because the roofer thought that the area with the questionable install was probably at more risk than leaving the older kind of built-up ballasted roof. Hence, the change order.
Why would that be more risky?
You mean the, the questionable install? Right. So what had happened was somewhere along the way, just rubber membrane was simply laid on top of the old built-up roof, and the material below it was not removed. So when you just look at it, it looks like a rubber roof. But once you start inspecting it and digging into it, you realize that it's really just laid over it and sort of glued down. I don't even know that it was glued down, just around the perimeter. So it probably didn't actually meet wind loads and other kinds of new warranty things that you would be required to do.
How would that pass an inspection?
I can't answer that. I don't know, I wasn't around.
This system, it's called a 2001 roofing system, so it's done in a lot of the higher wind parts of the United States. So, over. This 2001 system, this is the old system. That's, it, over time, since it's loosely laid, it'll start shrinking the membrane. So, it's been twenty-plus years when that roof was done. The other reason for doing it is, this section is under remodel, so we thought about, and that's part of the reason, too, of flipping, putting a new roof under a reconstructed area, and then leaving the other sections that aren't in the construction zone as well. If that makes sense.
Are there other areas of the roof with this same issue?
Nope, so once, if the board was to approve this, that would take care of all of this 2001-type system that was done twenty-plus years.
At that point.
Yep.
We pretty much had to use Larson, because that's the contractor, correct?
Larson's the general contractor, their subcontractor is Service Roofing, that does a lot of the school roofing projects.
Did they, did they do the, the part that needs to be redone now? Do we know when that was done and who did it?
I don't think they did it, they did not do it, no, it's an actual, it's a company that is based out of North Carolina. So, Service Roofing was not the contractor that did that.
Do you, do you know when that was laid, that bad portion of the roof?
1998.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions as far as the project and the add?
The roof that we kind of swapped it for, will, still has some warranty time left on it. So, all of the new roof will have a thirty-year warranty. The parts that we're leaving still have a number of years left, I think it probably varies a little bit.
Yeah, up to five years, I think, are some of them.
But there's no warranty on the section that was replaced in 1998?
Correct. Correct.
All right, all right, no other questions? Are we ready to take a vote? All right, all in favor of approving the Central Middle School Remodel Change Order, please state aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries six zero. Thank you both for your patience, okay? Okay, next item on the agenda is the West High Tennis Court Resurfacing, and Zach is again our expert on this one, and the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the quote from Pro Track and Tennis, Inc., for the West High Tennis Court Resurfacing Project at a cost of eight thousand, eighty-one thousand, five hundred dollars as presented.
Some good.
Second.
And do we have questions regarding that? They definitely need it, I was up there.
I was just wondering what the East High one looks like, too.
Yep, good question, so West High is in more dire need than East, but East is on the radar to be done here within a couple of years. There's the whole athletic complex for East High, that's kind of the reason things are on hold for East High, but West High is, it's definitely been time for that one to be done. Pro Track and Tennis, they've done multiple areas, they've did, done Burns City Park, or the Burns Tennis Court there, they've done Orange City, Lamar's, Easterville, Storm Lake, Tom Alsus recommended them, he's done a lot of work with them, and Muscatine, so I will take Tom's word for it, and-
Are they going to, oh, sorry.
Where, go, 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 go.
Are they gonna do any pickleball alignment also? Would that be, I mean, I think that would be logical, because the community and even gym classes using pickleball?
That hasn't been talked at this time, but it's something that we can definitely reach out to them and see.
Could we check into it on maybe a couple of them, because I think there's probably, what, ten courts there?
Eight courts at West, yep.
So.
Yeah, I can reach out to them.
Where are the, where are the competition courts at currently? Are they still at Burns?
Uh, I believe so.
West was usually-
West will play some game matches there.
Yeah.
There where, at Burns?
At West, although when they were, Burns was full, it was kinda sad.
So, so, both schools utilize what courts? Do they use their own courts for competition?
I know at East High, they've used, utilized Burns Park quite a bit, West High, I guess I would probably leave that up to Dan Huff to answer, but, or Jesse might have some-
I know, my daughter was out two years ago, and they, I don't, we never went to Burns at all when she was playing, I think some city metro meet or something, but they did all of her home meets there at West.
Okay.
And Burns is pretty popular, because Columbus uses it, and, you know.
It, it used to be, if I can recall correctly, it used to be the competition court for all the schools, I thought, Burns, but I, but then I thought they did something where they didn't utilize it at all anymore, but it's, it's still intact, so we just need to figure out what the, what the competition courts are for each school, and do they utilize the same? So if West gets fixed, will the competition court for East become, can they utilize West as well, if theirs isn't up to par at that time?
Yep, yep, absolutely, and I can discuss that with Dan Huff and see, you know, his thoughts on that as well. Yeah, that's it.
And what colors will they be, do you know?
We haven't picked the colors out yet, but there is the option, so once, if it is approved by the board, we'll, I'll get with Tom and tennis coach and decide what colors.
Will that, will that come back for a vote, or would that, would that just be?
Nope, that's just included in this quote, so, off the colors, I don't have the colors off the top of my head, but-
Make it, make it pop.
Yes.
And what is the netting, is it, or nylon netting, or, I, I played tennis up there, so I-
Yeah, and those, those nets will be getting updated too, that's not included in this. No, no, this is just strictly the surfacing itself.
I see the thing, Esther, I seem to think that recently NBC, like, the girls are away, the boys are home, I think, how that works, so they're, I must, used to play on different days, I'm not sure I lines up or not, but each conference is different, too.
Yeah, I was gonna say with the different conferences, I'm sure they won't have meets together.
Yeah.
And when is the completion of this anticipated?
Yep, good question, they're planning the summer to start it, so after tennis is done and over with, and from start to finish, it'll be twenty-four days that it'll take.
Awesome, and we will be on top of that so that we have no more gym issues?
Absolutely.
One more question.
Yep.
Will the community be able to utilize it, or will it be fenced in and gated and locked? Will the community have access to it?
So currently, right now, it is fenced in, but they don't lock that, so it's used to the public as well, I feel like that probably should continue that way.
Best if you have pickleball.
Yeah, yeah, we have pickleball for sure, but, and just like the track, you know, the fencing around it, but you get in and utilize the track, I think that's just for-
Yep.
And, and is it typical to just have a two-year warranty for the material?
It is, yep, and cracks are not under warranty, just because-
Right, I see that.
We're in Iowa.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Then all in favor of approving the tennis court upgrade, please state aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries six zero. Thank you very much, Zach, and let us know about the pickleball.
I will do that.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, next up is our last action item, I do believe, and it is Item V on page one hundred and twenty-two, if you're looking for it.
Zach is Stamper.
Purchase of furniture for East and West High Media Centers. The superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education accept the recommendations from the Facilities Committee and approve the purchase of furniture for the East and West High School Media Centers from Office Concepts at a total of one hundred and two thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy-nine cents as presented.
Some good.
Second.
Perfect, and Zach, discussion?
All right, yes, this was brought to me last year about doing an upgrade to the media centers at East and West, so we met as a facility committee, tried to think of ways to utilize the space, that is, there are a lot of the students use this space to go for a quiet area, so we're just looking for places to kinda entice kids to use it more. We thought that furniture updating would be the best route to go, so I have been dealing with both media center specialists, or media specialists at East and West, we met with two different vendors that we both have done work with in the past, Office Concepts and F and E, came back at, Office Concepts ended up being the lowest bidder for this, so if the board approved this, it would be eight to ten weeks for delivery, so we're looking at summertime that it would be completed.
And the quality of the furniture on each bed was comparable?
It was, and it's, it's tough doing it exact apples-to-apples, but as far as the use of the furniture, they're very comparable with, just apples-to-apples, some vendors are not able to acquire some of the furniture from the same manufacturer.
East has a much larger media center, are they getting less furniture than, like, is it just not, I guess I'm trying to envision the setup, like, what, what are they doing differently?
Uh, East actually, West is actually a little bigger.
Is it, I guess the East one's just super long?
East is, yeah, narrow and long.
Okay. So, is it like getting rid of all those tables that, or in there that stuff?
There's gonna be a lot of tables and soft seating, just from talking with both media specialists, students like to have the luxury of just sitting down on a couch and doing homework or reading of that sort, so that's kind of one of the reasons. West High has roughly thirty kids at one time in there, East High has twenty, so that's a difference too, in the amount of furniture.
It kinda gives the careers center kinda filled a little bit, to some degree, with the newer furniture updates, I'm sure some of the kids are seeing that, I think it would be nice to have that in the regular buildings as well, you know?
Absolutely.
Do we look at any stand-up desks in there for kids to work on stand-up computers?
These will be, there is some adjustable stand-up ones, but there are just your standard heights tables, a lot of the tables are what we call like a collaborative, so they can join together in a certain way to have another office staff meeting, in a sort of a sense, so there's lots of variable, or lots of multiple options with it.
That's good, I like the stand-up, cause that promotes the health aspect of not always sitting.
Yep, absolutely.
Does this addition of, of new furniture, what is that, both, both sites have quite a few desktop computers in areas?
Yep.
Does the addition of this furniture remove some of those, and what would it look, and I know you probably won't have the exact answer, I'm sure they'll be able to move it around as they, as they please, but for space-wise, is it a removal of so many tables, I know they have the, the four, six-person tables, they have the computer desks, the desktops, so what does that look like with, I mean, just a-
Yeah, the, the actual computer labs, I call it, those are gonna stay there for, for now, so we're not doing anything to those spaces, but the older furniture, West especially, she's just acquired furniture over the years, so it's kind of mixed-matched here and there, so having more of a furniture flow that is unique with everything, but the, the computer labs will stay there, and the desks.
So, are you gonna come back to us then with the, I know West needs like some stuff with the roof and some stuff with the flooring?
Um, not at this time, but West will be getting a new ceiling with this too, so-
Oh, with this?
Yes, just due for the fact that not everything on this quote is what West is gonna do, that'll be the max amount, so we're gonna have some adjustments there with that, but East High has a drop ceiling, so we are gonna update the lights for that too, this summer.
Perfect.
And they're pretty confident we'll get the, I'm just reading that, that lead times can be delayed, so just pretty confident we can get it before school starts?
Yes, yep, I've been reassured that, at least before school starts.
Perfect, thank you.
Does that also include the lighting, too? Or that-
The lighting will be done this summer, for sure, yep, yep, we'll just do that internally as a summer project.
Is the old stuff just gonna kinda get moved around, or are you gonna auction that off, too? I saw that there's auctions for some other stuff happening.
Yeah, that'll be auctioned off at another time.
You can store it in space where he's auctioning off better stuff at.
And we're not anticipating finding asbestos in the West roof, are we?
Um, yes, there is some asbestos, that'll be abated, too, so that's all factored in as well.
Perfect, all right, anybody else, questions? Janelle, you have a question? Okay, all in favor then, I like the color scheme, too, it's dark yet bright, I mean, I think it is nice, and anytime we can add the logo, that's helpful. So, all in favor of approving the furniture purchases for East and West Media Centers, please state aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries six zero. That is all for action items tonight, it's eight twenty-five, twenty-six, eight twenty-six, that's all.
Thank you.
But we are going to superintendent report with Dr. Smith, please.
Just one quick comment, thanks to Dan, Tim, and Tom for the, the ceremony tonight, I guess, celebrating our winter athletes, just kinda reminds you why we're here, a lot of times we get caught up in a lot of the, you know, things that need to be talked about, but the students are the reason we're here, and it was just cool seeing them here, so the turnout was great, so thanks to those, thanks to those buildings and those individuals for getting the kids here, it's really cool to see, we got a lot to be proud of.
Okay, we'll start down here with Stacy, any comments tonight?
Just one real quick one, I got to do the walkthrough with the Envision and Larson people on Friday, going through East and West, and it was, it was great to be able to hear their perspectives and to look through the buildings, for Envision, Kate Payne, Bobby Joe Duneckman, and Jeff Altman were there, from Larson, it was Travis Schwartz, Ann Schwartz, Chad Johnson, and Alicia Schmidt, and they were just like, very kind with the million questions I tend to ask, so it was great, it really was, and being able to come here tonight, then, I feel like I could speak a little bit when we're talking about things like, what's the furniture gonna look like, it was really nice, so I'm hoping to be able to do a lot more of that, and thank you to Jared for extending that invitation.
Super, Jesse?
I just appreciate it for everybody who's worked on, we've brought a number of projects here, and a lot of this stuff has been kinda slowly bubbling up as we've been working through it, and, you know, appreciate the work, particularly on the transportation piece of it, there's a lot of work behind the scenes on that with Zach, Michael, and Jared, you know, facilities, that's been a lot of work getting to this point, and that's a big critical decision, move forward on, and hopefully our execution will be near perfect here, so.
And I think, you know, communities always ask for change, so there's change now, we're going with first students, so I think it's-
We've heard, we've heard it.
We've listened, and hopefully, you know, we don't have tons of options, but this is what we got, and we're trying to do, so.
I just wanted to, again, acknowledge the great teams who came out, that was wonderful, I think that's our first time ever having something like that, and that would be beautiful, I am glad that we were able to do that, so kudos to all those involved, to get those teams here, the coaches, the parents, that was amazing, so thank you for that. I also wanna acknowledge Lydia Newsom, she was, she's a Waterloo West High student, but she took first place in the, the Poetry Out Loud in Iowa, you know, we celebrate our sports, but I wanna also celebrate our arts, and so, kudos to her, that was, yeah, it was still in March, March eighth when that happened, that weekend, and so she, that's huge, that she was able to bring out her poetry in Des Moines, so kudos to Lydia Newsom of West High.
Awesome, Esther?
Never fails.
Dang it, I should've started with you, Esther.
So, um-
Next week I will, he'll say, I don't have anything.
Right, I will, yeah, I just wanna follow that with, you know, thanking Dan Huff and Tom and Tim, working hard on our athletics, and the importance of, if you, if you listen to some of the young people speak, and they were talking about how they felt about their coaches, or the experiences they were, that they were receiving, being a part of a team and organization, so just wanted to highlight the importance of hiring and retaining good coaches, and that's also involving other extracurricular activities, band, music departments, theater arts, all those things that, other than just the classroom academics, those extracurricular activities, that you're able to establish relationships with, with young people, cause they'll remember that for a lifetime. I think that's all I had.
Okay, all right.
Oh, yeah, well, I was gonna do it at the next meeting, we got a little time.
Thanks to everybody who did something tonight, this, this book here of our program represents hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of hours of people's work, and thank you for that, and it was great to see the students tonight, and I'm excited for more to come.
Thank you very much, and don't wanna belabor it, but winning state and even going to state in anything, in poetry, in band, in choir, you know, it's a big deal, and it's very important that these kids be recognized for that, and I just think, like, our state bowlers, I mean, we are a force, a dynasty in bowling in Waterloo, and this is big for these kids, and they don't often get the platform as, you know, potentially a more, you know, major sport is what some people call it, but man, if I could bowl a three-hundred game, you know, I mean, that would never happen, but, but, right, but what, I just think it gives them an opportunity to come before people and be proud of something they did, and with our, you know, be bold and be- And with our, you know, be bold and be proud campaign, we, we need to be proud of these kids. And I just, tonight I just felt real, like you said, Waterloo proud. It was very cool.
Well, effectively, we got one, what, McDonald's All-Stars tonight.
Right.
That's huge.
Playing on the ESPN tournament tonight, you know? It, it's a pretty awesome thing, but, and also, just one comment that really struck me is a bunch of the kids said their best night was when they didn't have their phones. And I thought, boy, is that not a real testament to, you know, social media, everyone says it's so good, but our face-to-face and our, you know, interaction with people without a screen really, really can be powerful. So, with that said, our next board meeting will be Monday, April tenth, and we will have some important things at that meeting. So, I look forward to everyone being here. I think Liar will be back at that time. And so, I just thank you all for enduring this evening very much. I appreciate it. But, if you think about it, we had two meetings this month at an hour and forty minutes each meeting, and there's tonight, so. And having our athletes here was just well worth it, so. Can I ask for a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second?
Anyone want a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.